All right. Welcome to you all. Thank you for joining us at the Monday, February 3rd, 2020 work session of Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you all are here with us this evening. Our first item on the agenda is the Womata Orange Line platform repair update. Mr. Shields, do you want to introduce this? By the way, Mr. Ben is back in the saddle, our newspaper editor. Let's give a big round of applause. There you go. He was in the hospital over the weekend, so we're glad to have you back and your expert reporting tomorrow on tonight's meeting. So thanks so much and fairly well. Yeah, that's right. All right. So anyway, welcome back. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. We're joined tonight by Regina Sullivan, who's the head of government relations for Womata, and Jim Hamery, who is the head of bus operations for Womata. And they're here to talk with us about the platform repair project that will get underway soon. And so I'll turn it over to them. We have a PowerPoint and then Q and A and discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you for having us. Jim and I are delighted to be here with you tonight to talk about the platform improvement project for the summer. But before we get started, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Cindy Mester, who has been, I've been at Metro for nine years, and she has just been a tremendous partner to work with. And just been, as far as I'm concerned, one of the best staff in the city of the region. And I know she wears many hats, but she does a great job. I also want to thank Mr. Snyder, who, for his many years on the NBTC, lots of great questions he always gives us when we're there, and what a great advocate he is for the city and that environment. So thank you for that. So what we're going to do tonight is Cindy asked us to write an overview of the work that's going to be done this summer. Jim is the director of bus planning and scheduling, so he's the person who's putting together the service plan and probably has all the, most of the questions, not that I'm happy not to take them, but is that what we want to do is make sure that we give you complete information on how we're going to provide service for your constituents during the shutdown. I have to say, this is, it's for us, it's obviously, we've been planning this for a while, but it's early from the public process in that we found through research that our riders usually, they start organizing their trips and figure out where they're going to go about a month or so out before the shutdown. We will be doing a lot of communicating and obviously we hope to apply that to through your various different channels that you have too about the service and how it affects your constituents. And let me just walk through this presentation and then we're happy to take questions. So the project overview is, as you know, the goal of this, to make the platform and metro stations safer and more accessible. You can see, obviously picture tells a great story here, that platform, what the platform looked like, what the platforms we did last summer looked like before it was redone. They are 40-year-old platforms and concrete, as you all know, deteriorates. They get a lot of wear and tear. And so we really, it's critical that we have these done. And then we've taken, we've gone from at times where we would do a platform over shutdown of our weekends or for a while, we did a couple of, a number of years, we did that. That's our capital program rolled out. And we found that it really was much more efficient to use longer extended periods. Our ridership tells us, numbers tell us that the summer period, obviously rider ridership, so that was the appropriate time to put this plan into place. Last year in 2018, we successfully completed the reconstruction on the Blue and Yellow Line South of National Airport, the six stations there. And we, we did a great deal of work with Fairfax County, the city of Alexandria, but with all the jurisdictional partners in the region. Because even if you live in Maryland, we wanted to make sure that you knew what was going on and possibly within the district. And the other good news is when we shut the stations down to do the platform work, from a rider perspective, it enables us to enhance the customer experience. If you had a chance to go to King Street or Pratic Road or one of the stations that we did last summer, you'll see new slip-resistant tiles, a very important safety issue. Our tiles, as you all, if you've been in the system, on a rainy day, have experienced, can be very slippery. So we're addressing that safety issue. We've changed, changing our lighting to LED, more efficient, more environmentally friendly, and much brighter. We've been, we're changing the digital displays. You'll get new digital displays that will be large and able to give wayfinding information, emergency information, advertising for us in some cases. And then the new shelters that are very much needed in some of those stations. So I'm just going to, I'm not going to belabor these. These are just some of the accomplishments. Our communications team put together this, their kind of cute little information about, you know, how many feet of running rail we did, how many miles of conduit we laid during the shutdown. Just kind of give you a sense of, and how many buses Jim ran during that. So just kind of give you a sense of the scale of it and then some of the pictures from the stations that we had completed, the work that, while the work was being done. These are the, this is from phase one. Now, when we do this chart, excuse me, this slide going forward, obviously, we're going to add, change some of these and add the city's logo to this. So I just, but we just wanted to tell you, this is the coordination on December 18th. And your team participated too. We had a first, the first meeting of the regional staff of the partners all. And everyone on this, on this slide participated and we had other additional folks there too. And so we're going to, we started that on December 18th. We will keep that group going and we'll start doing it every two weeks where we have calls. I want to thank NBTC, who helps coordinate that for us, Matt Cheng, who's just done a great job helping us with that. And I also want to acknowledge the Department of Rail and Public Transit. They provided, and I know you all be looking for some additional funding too. They provided funds to the jurisdictions to help in a number of different ways for the shutdown. So now some background, let me just get to the, where we are now. On the December 11th, we announced the phase two stations, four stations on the Orange Silver Line. As you all know, get platform reconstruction, Vienna, Dunmore, West Falls and East Falls Church. We had originally, when we laid this program out two years ago, or about a year and a half ago, we had originally said during this summer, we would also be doing work on the yellow and green lines, but that for a variety of reasons had to be postponed, so that'll be done later. So we'd just be focusing on this one project, on this one area of projects. We did award a contract for the work to Keywit. Keywit was our contractor last summer, so that's obviously very helpful. They know us, they know the team. And so they're underway with the planning. I would say, as you all know, having been through restoring, renovating this beautiful building, I know it's one big project, a lot of other projects you have going in the city. We're at the, they've been awarded the contract. We're at a stage where we're working with them through all the issues on the construction side. And so in March, as we said, when we put the press release out about the phase two of platform work, we will be putting out the final plans for how we will serve areas that, those stations that are shut down and areas that need support. So we'll be putting, we'll be doing that in March and obviously be sharing the information very broadly. And then, so you know, the, hold on a second, I apologize. I changed slides. Here's the actual, obviously talks about the stations that are shut down. And West Falls Church Station will remain open during the project because it has extra tracks. We can do that. But there'll only be one track open. East Falls Church, obviously, will be closed. We'll be single tracking through that. And then the Silver Line stations from McLean to Willie Reston remain open, but we'll have a reduced headway because we'll have to single track through East Falls Church. So that's really, that's the plans, that's right now, the plan for what will be shut down and what will remain open. We're, now, this is where we get to work with Keywit to figure out if there's any concerns, issues we need to address. Before that, finalize the plans. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hamery, who's going to talk about the service plans that they're putting in place.
Got a question?
Sure, of course. So looking at the map, the orange line's going to terminate and start at West Falls Church.
Right, yes.
Then will it be single tracking all the way into Boston for June 1st or then back to double tracking?
To Boston.
To Boston. To Boston, yeah. And that's what Jim's going to cover this week, so Jim. Yes, yes.
So this is the service plan. So what's happening is that in order to do the work at East Falls Church, the silver and orange trains will have to share the track between where the silver line intersects with the orange and Boston Station where there's a crossover. So what the rail is going to do is so they can push two trains, one silver and one orange eastbound, and then bring one silver and orange westbound. It'll just keep that up all day long. It'll be the same service pattern all day. We'll be running A car trains, so it'll have the maximum capacity. But it will be constrained. It'll be somewhere around 16 minutes between the trains. And so to help with that, we're developing a bus service alternative. So the first and main shuttle is Vienna to West Falls Church. So Dunmore and Vienna will be hooked. We'll be working on the track. We'll run that express bus all day, every day back and forth. Very similar to the pattern we did for surge nine, as you remember back to that. And it was actually the only surge that we did where we actually had more bus riders at the end than we did at the beginning. Because we were able to take advantage of the HOV lanes that had newly been extended and approved and really ran well. The second shuttle will be from Dunmore to West Falls. You can see West Falls plays a key role to provide connection. Ninety-eight percent of all the riders are entering the system to go east and coming from the east to go back west. But there are dozens of people that go from East Falls to West Falls or Dunmore to Vienna during the day. And to accommodate them, we'll be operating on-demand shuttles using wheelchair-accessible vans. Because the travel patterns aren't reliable and predictable, so we'll just be prepared to accommodate people. The benefit is that we won't have to be running large coaches down to Westmoreland and Haycock and coming into that in many of the shuttles that we've operated. And so then, one of our challenges is that with the 16-minute frequency of the trains, we're about 1,000 customers during the morning rush period, short of having capacity for everyone with 100% capacity. So we're starting another pair of routes actually, that will operate from Vienna straight into the Roslyn-Boston border. And we're currently considering doing one from Willie Reston and Herndon Monroe area along that same pattern with the intent of being able to give people an option where they can bypass the railroad and get straight to their work or university destinations. And that will make sure that there's enough capacity for obviously everyone that's coming in from Fairfax and Falls Church, but also for Arlington beginning at Boston. We'll have trains beginning at Boston that will alternate with those single-track trains that come through. So Boston to the east will be an eight-minute frequency throughout the day. And that will extend all the way across the city. So that's the basics. We're anticipating that we'll probably be serving somewhere above 20,000 customers a day with the shuttle system. And to accommodate that, we have actually just this afternoon notified four different bus vendors that they will be part of our consortium, give us the resources. Preliminary estimates are, we're looking to have between 70 and 80 buses operating in this whole cycle. Obviously, since we're going to be using the highways, coordinating with Virginia DOT on the maintenance of traffic along I-66, both outside the Beltway and inside the Beltway, since they've, they're so accommodating to schedule a repair project during this period, just like last summer, they scheduled the rebuilding of the HOV lanes right during our project. So we've begun working with them and they've fully committed to maintaining as much capacity as they can during peak periods. The service patterns here are very peak-oriented, between five and nine, that's when a high percentage of riders are entering the system. Midday, I think we'll be able to continue 10-minute frequent shuttle services connecting all of the stations. But obviously it may be more subject to congestion and lane closures along that path. To talk, try, I don't know, it's next day, we'll be shifting next night. Yeah, sure.
What's the, what's the delta entrant time difference between the shuttle service and the normal metro trip? Meaning if you're taking one of those shuttles, so you're going to East Falls Church to, that's probably not a good example.
Well, it depends on the time of day because midday, oh, look, Google just checking. It was a 14-minute trip between Dunmore and Boston.
During, during the peak hours, right, so.
During the peak hours, as you know, that can probably double. So we're looking at maybe 15 to 20 minutes. Our, our standard marketing message is allow 30 minutes for variations and extra travel time and extra walking to and from the buses. And that is our guiding thread. We will have a trip planner prepared and well in advance of the service. So people will be able to tap all of their options and hopefully that'll inform their decisions. Certainly encourage people to think outside the car, to use the NBTC term, and realize that sometimes using different pathways than what you're used to may actually work better. And certainly using all of the existing services, which are on the next page. Fortunately, Prince William's bus service, the PR to see on the ride, start, got some I-66 grant funds. So they'll be starting three new routes. It'll allow folks coming in from University Avenue, Park and Ride in the Nassau area, all the way into the Roslyn-Boston border and the city. So they're going to be helping with providing those 700 people a day that park at Vienna and live in Prince William, find ways around the project. Similarly, Fairfax County is using the additional I-66 grant funds to bolster the frequency of service on their new routes that go from Vienna into the Pentagon, from Reston down to Crystal City and from Springfield Park and Ride, from the Fawn Plaza and from the Government Center in the parking lot. So there's actually a big array of alternative pathways throughout this network. And so we also see Metro Bus wins a few yards in the neighborhood. And we certainly encourage people to use all of those. We just recently increased the frequency of the three white coming out of East Falls Church. It goes into Roslyn and down to Farragut Square, again using the I-66 grant to double that service. So we've been preparing for this so long. The collective resources will actually be a good service, series of options for.
Will we still charge for parking at the stations if folks are parking there to take a?
So Vienna and Dunmore will be no charge, since there's no rail service. West Falls Church will have charge for parking, but it'll be restricted in a number of parking spaces. East Falls Church will be closed to support of the project and expansion of the bus facility at that location. So there will be no parking near West Falls Church.
How much, when you say restricted parking at West Falls Church, what do you mean?
Well, so at the parking garage, there's a surface lot on one side, a surface lot on the other. The surface lots will be where the construction staging will take place. The materials, the vehicles are within the parking structure itself. We've got our commitments to the University Center, to some other businesses. We'll be parking the construction employees there. So it may be as low as about 400 spaces that will be available for the public.
And not to get too granular, but in East Falls Church, if that's going to be completely closed, will you guys be blocking off the entrance before you actually get to the manned booth? Because if you, every morning if someone turns in there inadvertently, good luck getting out.
We'll use very good old message signs and certain things. The roadway itself is going to be used by construction equipment coming in and out. And actually what we're going to do is, the bus terminal right now comes off of Sycamore. We have a big loop, so we're going to cut through that loop into the entrance that goes up to Larson Boulevard. And we're going to stage some of our shuttle buses along the roads and shelters and expand, double the capacity of the bus terminal because it's pretty much oversubscribed right now. It's very different to our shuttle.
Okay. And last question for now. When you guys say summer of 2020, how many months are we talking about? Ends up May 20th?
So it starts on May 23rd and ends on September 7th.
Thanks, Mary.
We just talked about this really briefly before the meeting. There's a significant number of people who bike to East Falls Church or scooter to East Falls Church. Would they be able to hop on a, would there be a spot for them to park those vehicles or to hop on a shuttle to then go to Boston or would they need to go to West Falls Church?
Yes, the bike storage is going to have to be relocated. But recognizing that that's one of the highest percentages of people accessing rail by bike, some accommodation will have to be made. And it may actually end up relocated out into the parking lot outside.
That's one of those many details we're looking through right now. That's why I don't want to overcommit before we get to March. Happy to answer the questions, but really, those are the kind of things we're all going to do to. It's good to know you're taking that into consideration. Like our bike drivers.
What we do know is that a lot of shelters along the north side of the station where bikes can park get out of the weather, going to have to move that because they're going to have to use that to lift the equipment right up to the walls so they can bring materials up onto the rail.
All right. Another question for you.
Oh, wait. We might be getting to this, but given that we just did this in the first phase, what didn't go well in the first phase that you all have learned from and how are we incorporating into this one?
Having enough buses to start on day one was the biggest surprise. Our companies we were able to contract with had obligations through till the middle of June. So then we're able to bring in all of their assets until a couple of weeks into the project. This year we diversified, so we'll be drawing on the resources of four different companies. We'll have over 200 buses with the capacity available. And so we're planning on having enough capacity to handle 100% of the customers on day one at 5:00 AM when, when service starts up. We were able to recover within three weeks and average 28,000 riders a day, so.
And then how much more, I guess, I mean, more users, riders, should we expect at West Falls Church versus baseline? Do you have any modeling, what you might predict, given that you're going to have multiple shuttles there? You're going to be people who probably bypass the shuttles and drive themselves there.
To give it a context, it'll be similar to when Fairfax Connector was running into West Falls before Silverline started up. So you're probably looking at 4,000 or 5,000 people in the period coming through that peak period, 5:00 AM to 9:00, 3:00 to 7:00.
For a sense of kind of scale, what is it currently and then how much more do we think incremental?
Four times, five.
Four or five times the number of people at West Falls Church.
Yeah, it's gotten really quiet. It's very fast, 11, very close to.
Okay.
Hard to predict because people say that they do more socially acceptable things than what they actually do. And last summer, I can tell you that we were able to carry 65% of the pre-project rail ridership on the bus. So the 35% went someplace. And so part of what we'll show on the next slide is carpooling, van pooleing, other bus services, local bus services. We had probably 3,000 riders on the local bus services in addition to the shuttle riders. So we can find ways. And then lots of people who's telework, reduce the number of days that they travel. So there was a wide range of.
We worked with OPM too and asked them to encourage and get, actually get out the word to, obviously federal agencies have some telework, right, to support that. And they were very helpful. They were part of the team that, the team that we sent two weeks or so on our calls. And we've asked them for the same. Congressional delegation was very helpful with that also. So it's obviously another option.
So my last question is actually for Wyatt and Cindy. So given that we're going to expect four to five times the number of people at West Falls Church, I think I'd like to better understand what we can do to prepare the city. And so I think the most notable thing right now is that we have that active construction project that's already underway at the corner of Shreve, Seven and Haycock, which is already closing one side of the sidewalk. And it's obviously going to make access in that corner really difficult, especially if we're going to see a lot more cars and shuttles running through there. So I think it'd be helpful for us to talk about what plans we might have to either accommodate it, at least be prepared that it's just really going to be a really messy and tough intersection.
One of the initial things we're doing is very specific to the construction project as we do have CMO on the coordination call. So that they're very, Womata's very clear when we're going to be closing road lanes, how it's going to impact buses and shuttles, so that Jim can coordinate with us. And that's already started since the December meeting. Communications directors on the policies and off the calls, so that we can be consistent with the messaging, which I know will be on some slides coming up. We have been very clear in our partnership that we're not running buses. So we're not going to run the buses. We don't have the full transportation team. So we're looking to where we're coordinating with Arlington and Fairfax. Stations are in the jurisdictions to help. The one thing we are specifically looking at is DRPT funding, which does happen through the end resource. We have a current grant that may be in progress that we can be deploying. And we know the director of DRPT has additional money to see what resources we can bring to help with carpooling and wheelchair and messaging, acknowledging that we're not staffed at ministry of Austin. We have resources in the partner of our stations, so that we are at the very stage one. Nice to visit you.
How does our schedule when we're essentially tearing up the street for the sanitary sewer work line up with this closure? Is it happening at pretty much the same time?
It's pretty much running concurrents.
So were we going to be down to one lane on Broad and Haycock and Shreve while we're trying to put four to five thousand times as many people to the station?
So that was one of the things I brought up on the initial call in December is our construction project and also the dump on the calls. And because I was really concerned about inside the Beltway, we have the ramp coming off of 66 into West Falls. We have all the work at East Falls Church, 66 from the Fairfax and into the seemingly closed station there. And while not directly in the area, it does impact every road bridge because we have people, it's a lot of bike wrecking. So that means all tracking was for trying to coordinate with time. So that's where we've been.
Just say that we met actually last week on the VDOT, on the 66 inside the Beltway and outside the Beltway. Our project manager met with them and said they had a good initial discussion and obviously sharing information, sort of making sure that they're coordinating what they're doing. And then working with Cindy and the team. And so that Jim, sorry, Cindy said, so that Jim's team can make sure that they figure out how to address that. It's a challenge.
You know, we like to brag over our rail brethren. That's why they gave us a string. And we're pretty engaged in detours. We're going to have contract staff that will allow us to be able to stage supervisors and traffic directors wherever they're needed to be able to get our drivers to work with whatever phase of the maintenance and traffic plan we're facing. And if it's any consolation, we're practicing in Maryland right now. Purple Line Construction through Silver Spring is a nightmare and.
The road closure was closed, almost closed down. It was only one lane.
And they tell us 12 hours in advance, so. And they tell us 12 hours in advance, so we're getting pretty good at that. And that's really, I think, the key is, uh, as the construction projects and not just doors, VDOTs and intersection, as they proceed, it'll change. But we're going to be there to communicate with the operators.
I'd say it's good that we're doing all this behind the scene coordination, but a request I would have for city staff and communications is as this information gets pushed out, I'd like to go out with a map that shows kind of where expected closures are going to be because of internal city work. So people can plan those detours and routes, neighborhoods prepared. Because if we are concerned about hearing that cut through traffic now, I imagine between May and September, it's going to be 10 times worse. So if we can go out with a map that says, hey, between these time periods, expect Shreve to be down to one lane or Seven be down to one lane. That sort of information is really helpful for people to be able to plan and for neighborhoods to anticipate that they're just going to see a lot more traffic. But it's limited in duration, so there is an end in sight. Thank you for doing that coordination.
Thanks. I'm just going to go through these slides. I don't want to get you all way behind your agenda this evening. This just talks about our communications first. Jim mentioned earlier that we have, um, the ability for customers to go on and plan their trip in a very personalized way. We've developed that option for them. We've, we've done a lot of research to figure out how to outreach to our, to our customers. And we obviously, we have websites, things like that, but we also have, uh, teams that go out to the stations. And hopefully, you know, during the time period, this is kind of the communications timeline. We did the press release in December. In March, as I alluded to earlier, we'll have a definitive service alternatives and, uh, beginning to have our maps. Two months before, we'll start community outreach, homeowners association, business outreach. We are going to do a, um, an open house and it'll be here in Falls Church. We're looking for a location in Falls Church to do one. So we did this in Alexandria and it was very, very helpful. We had a lot of, um, folks come in in Alexandria and we thought we would try that again because people came and it wasn't just us. It was lots of different stakeholders who were there, um, including the road left, the bike share people and all that. So they all, uh, and we were there to answer questions. Jim's team was there, so we're going to do that. And we take advantage of every, I can guarantee you we'll be at the farmer's market here. If not, I'll do that on Saturday because I come most Saturdays. Um, and then one month before, we will, we have paid media, we'll have press conferences, we'll do press releases. We'd obviously love you all to participate in the press conference so that we can really, people start paying attention then. And then we'll have our street teams that'll go out and remind customers, figure out what you're going to do, start planning your commute. And then, uh, we'll continue, that all continues during the shutdown, the entire shutdown. And then we start telling them when we're going to come back and what to expect then. So this is the outreach opportunities, kind of a little more detail, and I will go into that. But then the last thing on there is we'll have the opportunity to all celebrate together and reopen the stations in September. And if keywords like they were last year, it'll be on time. Thank you. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. If there's other questions we can answer. And obviously we work very closely with Cindy. We also work with the PIO call. Let me just mention the PIOs all get on a call together too, separate from the one that I talked about. So they coordinate that also. They coordinate all the messaging and we get information from new folks to help with ours. We have a, we have a very robust communications team at Metro. We're very fortunate that way. So, and we have a team that are just dedicated to this. This is what they do. So they will be the working the whole time with you all, with us and with you all to make sure all of your constituents have the information they need.
I have a question here and then we'll go to our friends in the cities.
Sure. Um, so one of the things that would be most helpful is our citizens get on and leave the system. West Falls Church and West Falls Church as well. It's great for serving people further out. For me, it would be critically important that you tell people, when you get to West Falls Church, here's what to expect. Here's where to go to get the buses. How often will they arrive during rush hour? And if you get there at 10:00, how long do you expect to wait? And likewise, let's say finishing work in DC and you come out to West Falls Church at 7:00 PM, what do you expect? And I think it's fundamental, you want to keep as many people on transit as possible. Otherwise you'll have very kind of traffic conditions. You'll be concerned about it. The best way to do that is to give people a clear indication as to how they can still ride transit and basically make as few changes in their commute as possible. Same thing with East Falls Church. I arrive at the East Falls Church station. I want to go into DC. Where do I go? How often do I expect the buses to go to get me to Boston? Otherwise I may just get in my car and drive to Boston. You know how quickly that'll jam that area like in 30 seconds if a bunch of people start driving to Boston? So that, to me, it's going to be very critical to get very simple, direct information so that more people, as many people as possible, don't have to change their basic daily transit ride. Otherwise you'll have the auto mess that we already have and it'll get worse. The, uh, so I'll be interested in information that's that specific and that helpful. The second question. Yeah, but it, it's, yeah, the app is great, but I, I really, it, it needs to be fairly simple and direct. I get to East Falls Church at 8:00 AM during regular morning rush hour. What do I expect? Where do I go? How often will the buses go? Then if I get on the bus and I go to Boston, how long is the wait going to be at Boston before I get a train into DC? That kind of information seems to me is absolutely fundamental. If you're going to keep people, unless the times are absolutely absurd, to keep people on transit. Because I think that's, even though this is going on, I think that's a number one objective. Otherwise they're going to get in our mouths. Second question I have really is specific East Falls Church. So that bus shelter thing has been under construction for about six years. And when will that be done, uh, at East Falls Church?
The one on the south side where the
Yeah, the, 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 the
Kiss and Ride.
The one that had that whole parking lot torn up for at least, I don't know how many years, maybe four or five years.
I think we had a breakthrough and the, um, drainage issue that was holding that up got resolved. So I think it finished just prior to the start of this project. Let us confirm that.
Oh, sorry. Let me, let us confirm that for you to the date of when that will be completed. Because we did resolve that.
There's one other question. So this approach, even though highly disruptive, um, is, as you said, more efficient. So is Metro doing this in Maryland? Same kind of thing?
Yes, we are going to do, uh, next, not the summer of 2021, we'll be doing work in Maryland. We're going to be doing work in district again too.
Twenty-two.
And 22.
Same kind of thing. You're going to shut down stations?
We can shut down stations three months.
Same three months.
Thursday, we're meeting with the engineers to plan the orange, blue work over on the east side. So basically the 89 mile system, all of the outdoor platforms are being addressed. Mr. Schneider knows what the 89 mile system is, the original. Okay, then I just want to reiterate again, uh, it's clear direction for you to look at the things that are under there. Destroying a whole lot of spending transit riders. Is information is structured to be customized to the station? But if there are specific things you think are relevant to the communities in that neighborhood, whether it be Long Eastville or, um, other locations, uh, using those stations, let us know now so we can build that into the theory.
All right, let's see if our friends in the CACT have any additional comments or questions.
Uh, thanks for being here tonight. Um, I guess my one question is, um, I'm going to be working on this. Well, because potentially we are trying to, we need to get done with some of those.
We are not. We will add them to our list. Thank you. That's a great suggestion.
That's what I'm considering.
It's all downhill.
It stops going. No, I got it. I've, I've found the way. Right. Come back if you had a long day. It could be. That's a great idea. Thank you. We will add them to your list.
Uh, yeah, I've got a few here. Related, related to the, uh, the bike path. Uh, there's also the, uh, dual, uh, WNOD dual, dual trails widening project going on this summer as well. Um, and the bridge project and in addition to the bike rack project. And there's also the other portion of the bike trail project that is near the kiss and ride at East Falls Church. We've got, and the I-66 widening. So we've got multiple construction projects all approaching. Um, so I was, um, anyway, yeah, so please underscore, you know, uh, for, for bike users as well, um, and anyone else taking other, uh, other leads. Because it sounds like there's going to be a real significant difference around this project. So there are, because, um,
Appreciate that. And we obviously have connections to, uh, context to refuse, but if you have suggestions, we'd love to hear them.
For the, uh, the 16 minutes between trains, does that mean between each Largo bound train, 16 minutes? Yes. And then for each, um, Carol, 16 minutes. Okay, in each direction. Um, and then what's the, if we have a wet summer, what's our, what are some of the worst case scenarios in terms of if this stretches past late night?
Well, we had, I mean, we, the, the construction team, the team project team that does it, obviously, you know, building some of those dependencies that might happen. Uh, we had some weather last summer. Uh, we had some storms and, and we worked through most of it. At times we had to pull the team off our platforms and dangerous, but they were able to make up the time and stay on track. If we, if for some reason we should get behind, we would obviously immediately let everyone know that. But we're anticipating, um, some to go, to go well. Weather's probably, it's really hard to, so.
Okay. Thank you for the details. Hi there. Thanks for being here as well. Um, just to get, so I get a sense of how West Falls Church market, both surface lots could be closed off, construction permits. And then you're reserving a bunch of spots in the parking garage for businesses. Is that going to use the already reserved spots that are in that parking garage or are you adding more reserved spots? Cause there's numerous reserved spots that don't get used. So I was wondering if we're, that was where you were focused on? Just because with the increase of cars, that parking garage is going to, right now it's not used to its fullest, but it's going to be used to its fullest. Past capacity. So I'm trying to get a sense of how you're structuring this.
So drawing a distinction between reserved as in commitments to, uh, the university center that have a contract with us to have a certain amount of parking spaces versus those that are reserved, the people arriving after nine o'clock. I can't tell you how many will be, um, reserved for the public that would be coming in late. You'd have to check out. But the overall availability of parking would be significantly reduced, um, for the, the commuting public over what they're experiencing.
I think if
So the reserve spots are from like 6:00, 8:00 to 9:00 now. For those who are coming in early and you can park in those spaces at 10:00. Are you eliminating that? It seems to be something you should probably do if you want to
Parking managers haven't fully determined that. Uh, but with a very significant, there's a number of spaces one would expect if they were to use the, you know, the libraries because, you know, 400 spaces could be filled by six, six a half.
We have a part, our parking office is part of our planning team, which you can imagine for this project too. And I, but that's what James, the exact numbers are another one of those things that we have to back to, you know, exactly how that's going to shut down, probably shut down.
All right. Any other questions from?
Another quick question, just quality of life, um, question. Is there, are there any especially loud portions of this? Is this going to be a 24/7 construction project? And then is there any pile driving or anything?
So we, so we are working on, on, um, all the necessary permitting and, you know, compliance and all that. Um, and yes, so I will tell you at the beginning of the project, demolishing concrete, just the canyon is what's So there will be, but that will be something too. We messaged out last summer and we were very fun about it, but, you know, when it was going to happen, where it was going to happen. So we work very closely with Alexandria on that and with Fairfax too, because we obviously we have to take up that old concrete, we have to take it off. So yeah, the beginning of the project tends to be, it's, it's
All right. Are there any other vice mayor comments? Sure.
You mentioned fairs and festivals where you will be in May and we have a big Memorial Day festival in May. And there are a ton of people from the whole area that come to that. So that would be a good spot to
Great. Thank you. We have a terrific events team in Metro. No, but I really appreciate, we appreciate that because even though we, you know, our events team looks at all of those and we work closely with Cindy and Anything like that that you're aware of, it's really helpful. I'll make sure and let that so that we can talk to you.
That's Memorial Day weekend and then the second weekend in June, uh, there's the Tanner Hill Music Festival that is also right here to attract a lot of people from the area to come to that as well.
Great. One of your event staff used to work here, so you're great.
I thought she might know about those things.
She'd be still in Wamana.
And he does great work for us.
She was marvelous. I think she used to be in charge of that. She was great.
Well, that's yours. So.
I was going to say she's terrific. She does a great job. And then in addition to the bikes and scooters that go to East Falls Church, I also just thought, so there's some shuttles that come from the apartments there on Roosevelt. Falls Green Apartments has their own shuttle. Will there be a kiss and ride for those shuttles to drop off or what?
We'll have to accommodate them. I can't tell you exactly how we're going to do that because we're still negotiating the space allocations. Yes, that and, uh, and the kiss and ride activities and, um, taxis and, you know, all the different modes and shoes. It's better to accommodate them than it is to try and fight them. So for example, at Braddock Road Metro last summer, we actually created a new taxi lane and we coordinated with Uber and Lyft, uh, pickup location. If we have a scooter company designating so that it was clear where they could go without interfering with the overall flow.
All right. One last question.
Some more for staff. So Dave mentioned that, um, dual trails is happening this summer. Is that confirmed that they are going to undergo construction? Does that mean that they'll close the bike path between kind of the, in the city essentially where we're piloting, doing an update?
We are told that that is their intention.
It wouldn't be a great option to ride into the city at least bypassing.
We'll, we'll need to get more information on that. They're still in engineering right now, but I think it had, was their intention to do it over the summer.
Thank you.
Still engineering and need to do the site plan. So staff are working with them.
All right. Unless there are any other questions, I want to thank you all for coming out and for your continued support. And this will be an ongoing conversation, but thank you so much for coming out to see us. All right. Our next item is the cottage housing report. I guess you're welcome to stick around. I mean, it's sort of tangential. But you can sit at the table wherever you guys want to hang out. It's up to you all.
Okay. Thank you. So Carly Aubrey was our staff lead for the cottage, uh, housing ordinance that went through in 2017. And, um, as part of that ordinance, there was a requirement that we come back after three years because this was a new zoning tool. And we were going to report back on, uh, just to have a, a discussion about how it worked and also if there are any desire for any changes to it. Before we get started, I will just note that Carly's also here to gloat because the Kansas City Chiefs won the Super Bowl and she's their number one fan. And we should also just note that Scarlett is here as well. So Scarlett, thank you for being here tonight. All right. She's got her book. Yeah. Carly.
Good evening, council. Um, as Wyatt mentioned, the ordinance was adopted in 2017 and with that, a pilot program was included to, um, kind of place restrictions on how many applications we received per year and the order in which we would process them. And then it also included that we would come back in three years to bring your report on applications received and any recommendations on what to do with the ordinance. So the purpose of tonight is to hear about received in terms of applications. And then staff has proposed a few amendments to consider all or some, and then kind of process forward if we want to consider those. So the, as a reminder, cottage housing is defined as grouping of small, single-family dwelling units clustered around a common area and developed with a coherent plan for the entire site. And the city's ordinance was drafted after reviewing 19 other ordinances, guiding documents and review and comments from boards, commissions and council. The purpose of the ordinance is to help address changing composition of households in the city, provide more diverse housing choices and to allow high-quality infill development that's compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. The page two of the staff report includes some updated or policies from the updated demographic housing chapters. And to summarize, a range of housing is needed to address the changes in householding, household composition, such as more people living alone, more millennials. And to summarize, a range of housing is needed to address the changes in householding, household composition, such as more people living alone, more millennials, more persons fifty-five and older and fewer households with children. In terms of, um, applications received, one was submitted for railroad cottages located at the end of Railroad Avenue. The special exception site plan were improved, were approved in late twenty seventeen and the units were fully occupied by late twenty nineteen. They have ten dwelling units plus a common house and, um, it includes a central pathway and thirteen parking spaces that are clustered and seven additional along property line. There's landscape buffers and it is age restricted. No additional applications have been formally received. There has been interest in a couple of sites, but both of those were outside of the required five hundred foot, you know, revitalization area buffer. So in the staff report, there are four code provisions that staff to put forth as possible, uh, amendments, and these were chosen as means to increase cottage housing development opportunities. So the first one is the age restriction, special exception criterion, um, while the goal of the ordinance is to provide a mechanism for older residents in the, to stay in the city. Um, as the top plan chapters that have been updated mention, there is a growing need for a diverse housing stock for other population segments in the city. Um, if this is to be considered, um, I'll write back up. So I would note though, that, um, the ordinance, while it requires it to be age restricted, it does not require that there is covenants placed on prohibiting minor children. That's an option of the developer, which in railroad cottages case, they chose to do that. But otherwise, in the example of fifty-five and older developments, there could be some, um, households that are fifty-five and under, including children. The second criterion, special exception criterion is the five hundred foot buffer. Um, a more standard walkability buffer is typically a quarter mile. So there is an attachment two that illustrates the current buffer and the proposed quarter mile buffer, the given area, an idea of the area that would be added. Um, and in addition to that, there are about a dozen properties just outside of a quarter mile, but immediately adjacent to the W N O D trail, which could be considered for inclusion because the W N O D trail does provide a real nice direct access to, uh, revitalization areas. The third one is, right now the cottages are limited to R one A zoning district. So an option is to allow it also within the R one B. Um, attachment three shows a map with R one B added and the buffers. Um, the blue line is the quarter mile, black line is the five hundred foot. So that does open up some areas. However, as I'll mention in a minute, um, parcelism would be very much required for R one B. Which brings me to fourth, um, provision considered for amendment is currently the site area requirement is at least forty-five thousand square feet. So one consideration is to reduce that to thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, which is the equivalent of three R one A parcels. We would still apply the same formula, which would allow approximately twice the base density. And this would also allow enough area to provide the other code requirements such as setbacks, off-street parking and landscape buffers. So the ordinance or the staff report then goes into some of the analysis for some of these and kind of focused on some, a couple of the main concerns during ordinance adoption, which were the mechanisms in place, the limit where cottage chapters could occur. And then the added density in low density neighborhoods. So the table on page six provides some information on, just looking at existing single R one A parcels that are at or at least thirty-three thousand square feet or forty-five thousand square feet in size. And what that attempts to show, um, is that these amendments are considered the one for the area and the one for the buffer. Um, there's nineteen single parcels that fall within those criteria, but highlighting, yes.
In a reference, so you're just talking about single, how, single lots, not consolidation. I mean, there's tons of tear downs are waiting to be torn down, I'm guessing.
Existing, single lots, correct.
That would just be multiple, one or two or three.
Correct. And that's what, um, if we consider moving forward with any of these, um, I would like to look closer at these maps to see, um, where those potential assemblies could occur.
There's plenty of places where you might have a neighborhood that's kind of older houses, that probably chairman of rights is hearing now, quote unquote, by developers. Get three of them together, doesn't make a single option.
Right.
Anyway.
Yes.
Yeah. Just to follow onto that, um, consideration of what we're talking about here as it relates to Greenway Downs, um, and what's being proposed as amended, how does that fit together?
So most of R one or most of Greenway Downs is R one B. So it would be only possible if we extended this to R one B.
Okay. So there's no concern about making, as it is right now, the recommended zoning change for Greenwood, Greenway Downs and also amending this as suggested?
I think so. I mean, I think those are two different mechanisms to provide options for housing, either working with what's there already or providing a different type of housing option entirely, such as the cottages.
And we're not actually considering developing historic and park parcels?
No, and that's why I called those out because especially as the ordinance is now, there's three single parcels, but they're either parks or historic.
So what's the square foot, the lot square footage, now square footage for a cottage home?
Right now it's forty-five thousand square feet. Forty-five thousand.
How many? No, that's for, that's for the entire lot. I'm talking about each unit.
We don't have a requirement for that in the code. Um, the cottage, railroad cottages, they're approximately two thousand square feet.
I'm talking about the square footage of the units.
Oh, okay. Eight hundred square feet.
For example, like the one we approved, the one that was approved had, was it maybe eleven, eleven units? Is that?
Twelve units or ten units plus a common house.
Okay. So total lawn units, but let's call them ten on how many square feet?
That was about forty-five, it was a little over forty-five thousand.
That one had forty-five hundred square feet per unit.
It was fifteen hundred square feet.
That's the actual, I'm talking about how much land you need for, for lot, for cottage. And if that, at least for that instance, and I can't remember the actual rules. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what the contemplation is. Like presumably they're not gonna have, they're not townhouses, right? So they have lots around them. And I'm trying to figure out what the expectation is. And the reason I'm doing this in my head is if you take a lot and you could put on it, you know, uh, thirty units, that's gonna really affect your neighbor. If you take three houses to tear down, so if three houses you have eighteen or sixteen. So I'm trying to do the math in my head of what the expectation is per, we've only done one of these and I don't remember what I was involved in consideration, right? I don't remember in terms of what the firm lot, you know, for example, like you can have a lot that requires ten thousand square feet, even though the house itself is in ten thousand square feet, that's the expectation for lot size. And so it sounds like at least the one project we approved, the area was four thousand five hundred square feet.
Approximately four thousand, yeah.
Okay, so four thousand. Okay. That, that's basically what my question was.
So Carly, so if you were able to do such thing on a thirty-three thousand square foot lot, you could roughly say you might be able to do six or seven plus a common house if you had the same kind of dimensions as.
Right. And I did do some of that math looking at, cause then you also have to consider the area that's required for parking.
Right.
The landscape buffers. So I didn't.
No more than that. Probably be less than, I mean, we're probably talking a handful.
I mean, there's, yeah, there's areas for the units, but then there's all, all the other code requirements, the open space, they have to have X amount of open space or that, so area.
Right. So again, given the parking requirements and open space and setbacks and all that. If you went thirty-three thousand as your new, probably would not be able to get more than.
About six.
Five or six, plus common, I mean, including the common house, but maybe.
Which is optional.
One that's small might not include the common.
Correct.
So what are the, what are the setbacks between houses in this ordinance? Between units?
There wasn't one. There's expire safety zone.
What is that?
I think for the cottages they did, depending on, I think it's about six feet. There's some where the porches come up to about three feet of a corner of one, but I think if there's windows on each one, I think it's at least six feet.
Okay.
And these, these properties.
I was gonna ask whether you were done with your presentation before I ask questions.
I can be.
Okay. Um, so I think it's important, so you mentioned that there were two inquiries that we had gotten with two potential ones, but they were outside the five hundred feet, I think, right? Were there any other, I guess, reasons why they wouldn't qualify besides being outside?
Um, it's, there, but one was across jurisdictional lines. So that would be a complicated factor potentially. There's also access to one of them looked kind of difficult and it wasn't correctly on. So, um, that's, that's something else with these other, these other sites. I was just strictly looking at size and location, not into the all around factors.
Got it. Have we gotten any sort of just general interest? Cause I do think it's important for us to understand what the market for these might be. So we can look at maps and kind of guess like, oh, these ones might be assembled and you might get enough to meet, you know, these criteria. But have we gotten, you know, since I think the cottage housing project got a lot of attention regionally, um, have other people just contacted us saying, we would love to do this, let me, tell me what the rules are, so we know.
We've had, yeah, besides those two, um, I think the other interests I've seen have been on properties that are historic. They don't have interest in tearing down the historic home, um, but they would like to see a cottage thing, but I think that could be something best served if I can get a separate mechanism, like a successor going in there.
My second question then has to do with, so out of all the different, I guess, changes we could make to the ordinance to relax the requirements, is there an order or priority that staff would recommend? So if we had a policy goal that says we want more cottages, um, which one, like would you recommend doing all of them, some of them, what order, what priority?
Um, I guess I'll bring, so the planning commission, um, their focus, some of them, a couple of them wanted to leave the age description. The other ones were okay with, um, removing that one. However, they all, they were all interested in providing incentives for affordability, especially if we looked at increasing the buffer. Um, and then so I think personally I would properly, it was based on what we have. I'd wanna look at maybe the buffer for R one. I wanna say R one B, but I think that's just a lot of signage. I'm not sure if that would be.
I think you make a really good point about the walkability. So with quarter mile being the more common kind of walkability zone, I guess, that would be the one that I would, you know, look at. But I mean, in general though, I mean, the sky did not fall when we did this. I think generally the, the project, pilot project we did was successful. And so if we do have a goal of kind of adding more, I would love to see the affordability provision in there. Cause I think the end result that we got from the railroad project was they're luxury cottages. They're not affordable by any means. And so if we can create some incentives or rules that if we do relax it, it has to meet a certain criteria, I think I would, I would be interested in looking at that further. Thanks.
So, um, I, I think the first comment I'd like to make is that we really need a, a lot, uh, some time to have a discussion about this. Because if I recall, early days, the cottage market is very controversial in the city. People now have to understand that these relaxed criteria, pretty much every part of the city is gonna be potentially affected. So that's point number one. Point number two, unintended consequences, although don't intend to incentivize the structure of historic analysis, the fact of the matter is we have fairly good coordinates. So you can tear down a historic structure or let it fall apart for a year and I don't think it's a really pretty line to follow. So we have to be very careful about unintended consequences. Next thing is the number per square foot that I'm there with, um, is important. Then you need to look at potential school costs. If you had three single family homes and it's assigned to students per house, it's a school cost. Now, if you have ten or eleven, and this is because you were, you're recommending the elimination of the age restriction, what are your school costs going to be for that? So it's, it's, the benefits are obvious to developers. What's, I wanna be concerned about theory, there's some good elements to this, but I'm concerned about unintended, also concerned about neighborhoods being caught off guard. Um, this needs to be a very thorough discussion of this, uh, whether we use it for ceiling floor, as I suppose we need a couple of questions, um, thoughts and questions.
I share the same concerns that, um, Councilman Snyder does. Um, another unintended consequence to, um, I'd like for us to research more related to parking and traffic coming out of these. I think fortunate enough with the first development for that to be tucked away, uh, at the end of, um, where railroad avenue terminates, but, uh, if you start extending this a quarter mile and you look at some of these neighborhoods that are affected, uh, you run the risk of, of creating some, some real problems in terms of parking, uh, and traffic. And, um, I cannot stress enough getting good research associated with, um, city service costs, specifically schools by increasing density, uh, and especially considering moving this over to an R one B. Um, the age restricted aspects is really the only reason that, um, the railroad cottages ended up as a net fiscal positive. And removing that, uh, and increasing the density is not just gonna increase costs, uh, I think, um, potentially to the schools, but to the city as well. So I think we really need to understand what that's going to be.
Thank you. Uh, just on the parking point. So Carly, on line one twenty-six, we claimed that we got thirteen plus of parking spaces and approximately seven spaces along Northern Poverty line. When we were talking about the project, I don't remember that we knew that we were gonna get those seven additional spaces. That was always sort of, uh, out there. But so we, we are stating for the record that we basically have twenty parking spaces for use at railroad. Is that where we?
Right.
Yeah. Well, that's, I think the record ought to reflect that's a little bit more than we had thought that we were gonna get, which is good and bad. I mean, I think it's balanced good because, you know, people are still using their cars, but that, that's gonna be hard to replicate as Mr. Ridgeman says in other tighter locations. Um, now again, puts us up against, we would like to build housing where people felt like they did not have to have a car or one car. But, you know, how powerful the re, social engineering to accomplish that in a small town. Um, but just getting accurate TDM stuff for all new projects, open family as well as infill is, is one that's useful now for single family homes too. Now we scoop up all that data, but, um, large single family homes could have up to four or five quarter. Uh, the other question was about stormwater, uh, management and our experience at railroad, um, what it taught us, did we find that because, you know, we had high expectations that stormwater capture would be better for those realized and the neighbors feel like, you know, it worked out okay. I just don't know. Um, but that's also very important if we go currently these things elsewhere, which is pretty much they have to be cleared out, I would think like railroad was. And there's stormwater capture that may have to be engineered, um, uh, trees and bushes knocking me up and have to require money to be spent by developer to put it underground, which I understand railroad led to some costs that, um, maybe it's more burdensome than most developers would wanna bear, frankly. And if you change the rules and nobody participates, that's not an ideal solution. No, what about stormwater capture? And I don't, you know, as we talk about what we're doing here with this, affordable housing is extremely worthy goal, which we are trying to pursue in other locations. But I think we ought to try to think of railroad projects like it as middle housing. And if we here can build or leave the market to build something that costs six or seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars even, that is middle affordable housing, middle cost housing is, you know, you're closer. And tear down prices now getting up to seven, eight, nine thousand dollars. So people who say, oh, it's not affordable. Okay, I get that. But you find ten other seven hundred thousand dollar houses that have been built during my time in the market. New, brand new houses with all the mud cons. So, you know, as far as what we're trying to achieve here, I'd like to try to achieve this. New, brand new houses with all the mud cons. So, you know, it's always what we're trying to achieve here. I'd like to try to achieve this in housing for a while.
Well, here we are. Um, I guess the next step forward for the multi-award winning cottage project, um, and, and so I have a new set of, uh, things to consider. I find it fascinating, I guess, uh, from an urban design point of view, that, uh, reflects the transition of the city. From clusters of neighborhoods, single family houses, separated by trees and lawns and streets. It's just a tighter formation. We have now two duplexes being, one finished in Greenway Downs and another one in, uh, uh, Great Falls, right? Um, and there could be more, I guess, right? Besides a lot, you could put in triplex. If you want something, something that has separation, without a party wall, then a cottage. That might be the, you know, could be affordable in the sense that, what'd you call them? Middle housing? Middle housing. Well, affordable isn't, I don't, I don't know. I like middle housing, so middle housing could include, uh, these kinds of things. But I think, you know, pressures could be on to, to, uh, sort of opening it up to some sort of special exception process that we, you know. Starting to, um, formalize, memorialize how we see these things as, um, we could have a request for, um, higher heights, um, sometimes form factors. I don't know. Uh, my question is, where is this in the context of, um, the other accessory supplemental dwellings, SDUs? So, you know, I don't see that in the schedule. Uh, there's a lot of discussion. I know there's, uh, there's like an entire cabal of underground actors working to bring this before council, but it's not on the schedule. So, I'm sure very well we're, what I'm talking about here, so. Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna call them ADUs because as soon as I call them ADUs, then people get into argument with me. And then we, we're talking about two different kinds of ADUs, so I call them something else, dwellings, SDUs. Entire, and I say some call them ADUs, well, SDUs.
I would like to, it would've been nice to package all these things together. I will say that the fact that this was a pilot program within three years kinda pushed this through the forefront. Um, but it would be, it would make sense to look at these, possibly the most of these, along with what we're doing with Greenway Downs. And what we wanna do with, um, accessory dwellings, to look at all those, and have potential impacts comprehensive stuff. But this is something that, you know, here, when looking at it, get feedback on what's, um, digital options, to think of what would make sense for this particular audience.
Well, I, I agree with that. I, I think that, um, the comprehensive look at all these other options. There could be as well like a, a loosening of regulations on townhouse, right? I mean, this is, we're talking about the urban design of the city going forward. So to do a piece now, I think it doesn't do justice. There needs to be, uh, at least some sort of thinking on where we're going with all these other housing priorities. I mean, they all work into some degree of, uh, we have to, you know. Do I wanna move out of my thirty-five hundred square foot house into a studio apartment above my garage, which I haven't built yet? I don't know. It was, uh, closer to my cars. Yes, thank you.
Touching on, there you go. Just, um, believe, um, tree, I believe, uh, permits, just believe, um, there is, there's, um, site. That's what I'm thinking. If you allow more, if you got an excellent amount of square footage, today you're permitted to uncover a certain amount. Like definition, if you allow more houses on that property, you're gonna have less streak, you know, less, uh, incidents, less capability. More of a site, unless you build, like, virtual units or something big, hidden and non-referent, all the rest underneath. So, that's another issue which I think, to think about, how we, how we, um, get these different policies to, um, to action. Cause if we're here first launched, then they're in conflict.
You know, I'll, I'll look at that. I haven't looked at that closely. Um, the cottages does follow the existing R one A standards of thirty-five percent previous. And then twenty percent, um, can, so, yeah. So, but with the updates, um, there can't be ever, that would be, that, 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 there's not creative economy.
Thank you for this. Probably on February thirteenth, twenty seventeen, if we'd said you must come back the day after the Chiefs won the Super Bowl. Never would've thought that would be today, so. Glad that all came together for you. Um, so someone mentioned the duplexes, that there are two duplexes in the city, and I know. So the, the large duplex that is two, really five thousand square foot houses, how big is that lot? Could there have been cottage housing on that lot, do you know?
I would have to look at that a lot, a lot, a million.
I think it's not close enough to, right, the five hundred feet.
It's also zoned R one B, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but it, it also wouldn't have met the, uh, the threshold.
Um, are there other lots in the city where duplexes could be built?
So I did, um, prepare Ms. Schaefer for that question, and so she was planning to be prepared to speak to it with Greenway Downs overlay. Carly, I don't know if you have any information on it, but we, we can discuss.
We can, we can wait.
If it's a buy right use in R one B, if a lot, if two lots next to each other meets certain criteria. And, uh, that's the short end.
So as we, but there are only two duplexes existing in the city.
I don't know that for a fact. I think what was just stated is that there are two that have been recently done. One's under construction, one was recently completed. I think there may be more scattered around. Yeah, Washington.
The reason I ask is because I'm thinking about the size of the duplex that's on Great Falls that is so, so big area wise. Does that exceed what cottage housing would exceed? How do we measure those things? And if we're talking about looking at different kinds of middle housing, is it, or townhouses, duplexes, how does that all fit? What is it?
So duplexes are, you'd use an R one B, but you have to have a lot, uh, that is at least, uh, twelve thousand square feet. Uh, so they each, uh, have seven houses, six thousand square feet. Um, and then you have to have a minimum, a lot of, of a hundred feet, which most of them are, when the lots are not wide enough, um, to meet that requirement. But there are a few, uh, lots that are also, there's a, uh, requirement at that requirement. Um, and then in terms of the arts, it's the same requirements that they, 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 like, they, like, set back, uh, ten foot on each side. And then, uh, thirty foot probably would be hard enough.
So twelve thousand square feet total lot. How many for us? And is there a map? Right, well, one of them, the, the one that's on Greenway, was just a funny situation, the way that was built. But it used to be two single family homes and about like thirty or forty years ago, somebody bought those two homes and joined them together and took one home. Right, right. Yeah, and they joined him into one home. Right, right. So it was huge for a long time. And then when it was sold, did they just ma, they just maintained the footprint and were able to turn it into two homes? So, yeah. Anyway, that, so I, I don't know if there's any other houses like that exactly that exist, because they are little plots there on Greenway. So, so the mayor's concerned about just how the neighborhoods can change because of different kinds of housing that fits. And it does seem like we have, you know, a pocket of townhouses here and this here and this there. And there's a lot of ways to get around it. And it seems to me that these builders, because both of these duplexes were built by builders that are trying to maximize what they can get. I just think we really need to take a look at our code and make sure that those unintended consequences aren't gonna happen. That a builder's not gonna come in and, and do something that none of us even imagined because they can fit it in by right. So that is my concern. I really like the cottage housing, and I feel like if there was a way to do that someplace else that, um, and to show that what we have now actually works well. And I'm wondering if we've, like, checked with the neighbors, or have we had complaints from the neighbors? Or what's the neighborhood satisfaction? Cause they were not happy about it going.
I don't think, I think it's someone else's.
Some of them, so. Right. So what is the impact on the neighborhood? Cause I think that's, that's important to think about too, if we.
Carly, maybe this is a question for why, this is interesting. Maybe there's a simple answer for this. But I'd be curious to know about the economics between land value, zoning, and housing type. I think this map came with, this come with the cottage, so it was. Just looking at the significant disparity, uh, between these two blocks here. I live over here. This is the Broadmont area. And when you look at the value of the homes compared to the value of the land, there's a significant difference. Whereas the majority of the houses over there in that section of town, building guys are more than half, if not equal, up to two times. What, what are the, is it, is it the land size and the zoning overlay that leads to the economics of that? Or is it something else altogether? Is there a simple answer to that? Or is it just that people spend more money on the houses in that section of the city?
So what it is meant to be is a lens to be able to see where are the new houses in the city of Falls Church? And, and so it's not a perfect, um, study, but it's a proxy for that. And so where you have that, um, land value greater than the improvement value, that's probably an older house. And when it's not that, it's probably a house that's had an addition or been a tear down and rebuilt.
Sorry, is it edited?
That, that's the way, I think that's the.
It's a really interesting, I mean, it's a, to me, like, as a, as a real estate, it's a really interesting map to try to dissect, uh, and to think about what's led to that. And what it potentially see in different areas of the city. And then the things that we're talking about here, cottage zoning ordinances and zoning overlays in places like Greenway Downs. How that, that color scheme would change over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Uh, anyway, I mean, it's. Great football, but it's, it's interesting. It's, it is, it's fascinating.
You know, perspectives, what kind of community are we building for the future? I, I always say, I'm not, I don't care so much what you wanna live in. I, I care about the family that's gonna buy your house. And, you know, is that family gonna be a family that earns, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars a year and is buying a million dollar and a half or more house? Or is it gonna be a family of not quite such impressive means, because they're gonna buy a smaller house?
It's funny you mention that. I, I, every time I think that we've reached that peak of how much you could charge for a new house built on a standard lot. Every time I think we've reached that, I see another listing that.
It's the one that sold around the corner from Mary Bay, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
So most of these lots over here in this area though, we're seeing, I mean, they're large, right? You go over to that area at times. Larger lots, houses are either newer or more expensive or bigger.
In the original staff report, including one, that was a few years old, so it's interesting to see how much warranty in this.
Ooh, I'd like to see that.
But, you know, bigger, bigger is a relative term.
Well, it's not, it's not a lot. So, the R one B was kind of a late, yeah. The R one B was like, hey, let's consider this also. And so, yeah.
Why don't we wrap up the conversation?
There's one question about duplexes again, or duplexes allowed in R one A or not?
Just not.
Why, why, why is that?
I wanted to go.
Is there a reason for that? Pipe stems too? I mean, are, are pipe stems allowed in either R one A or B?
Correct. Uh, well, R one A is sort of a, well, it's, it's an entrance zone, it's, so, theoretically why duplexes aren't typically allowed.
So it's act, it actively wants to discourage dividing up into smaller, more spacious spaces.
So I wanted to go back to the, um, potential amendments that staff was putting forward. Um, so in general, I think anytime you touch zoning, it becomes a very personal and tough subject. And so I think in general principle, I'd like to, at least for staff to consider, is I think incrementalism is not a bad thing here. So, for example, I wouldn't do all, all one through four all at once, right? Because of those concerns about unintended consequences, not knowing what service costs will do. And so if there's an order, like, go back to that question I had, is if there's an order that you'd recommend that you think would create huge spikes in costs or changes to neighborhood character, you know? That's probably what I'm more interested in, rather than saying, let's just do all four of these, cause I think that would be pretty radical. Um, and I, cause overall I do think cottages are a worthy housing type that we should have. And if we think we can encourage more of them, um, by relaxing one of these for a couple of years, testing out, see how it goes, see what sort of demand we get. I think it's worth testing our way into. Um, but I don't think I would support all at once, cause I don't think we know how, what the impact of all that would be. So.
All right, there are other comments. Um, I, um, I share some of the concerns about unintended consequences. I work with folks who, um, make their living finding things that might be overlooked with other people. And, um, that's how you end up with duplexes, things like that. You know, exception or something like that, that's not really readily considered and they, um, uh, kind of rush through it. So I think we gotta be very slow in doing this, both so our community understands it, because it has major implications for community character, in my opinion. And to my mind as well, cottage communities are a lot like townhouse communities. You have density rather similar to townhouses. And so just like, I don't think you'd expect a townhouse development to go up right now into an established single family neighborhood. I think we'd be very careful about relaxing rules that would allow cottages to sort of plop down in existing family neighborhoods. My suspicion, I don't know this, is that they'd be more profitable for a builder than just three houses. And if that's the case, then I think people will be looking to find those throughout the city. And if we expanded it to twelve hundred fifty feet or whatever it is for a quarter mile, then I think it seems like substantial portions of the city would in fact be eligible for at least consideration of this. So, with that being said, I think it's worthy of further discussion. I just, to my mind, it ought to be a slow conversation that allows people time to absorb and consider it. And also for all of us, particularly staff, to consider potential unintended consequences. Um, but I do like the idea of holistic improvement, as Mr. Conley had mentioned, about looking at this in the, the lens of what do we want big picture wise for our community as far as housing goes? Um, and so I, I just think maybe we oughta, um, you know, have a kind of slow, measured conversation about this. So, that's kind of my last comment. Um, and maybe with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. I think we weren't gonna solve this tonight, but thank you for the good work you've done. Um, let's go on down to the Greenway Downs then.
Ms. Shayna Schaefer is here to give the staff report for this. I'll just note that the planning commission has had, uh, the Greenway Downs overlay on its work plan for probably five or six years or so. It was referenced in the Zoak report. And, um, so this is a longstanding issue. In short, what the attempt here is to bring the zoning regs into closer alignment with what the built environment is in the Greenway Downs area. Um, and, uh, but again, there are, as was noted with the earlier item, there are, uh, we, we have to be careful about these things and make sure we don't have unintended consequences. Um, the planning commission has looked at this ordinance twice, has provided comments on it. Will give a staff report tonight, get council's input on it. And the request is to schedule it for first reading and formal consideration, uh, but we'll wanna have the discussion and, uh, and council feedback first.
All right, welcome, Thatch, for your time, Mark.
Uh, so, uh, as Wyatt had mentioned, um, the request tonight is to hold a work session to get council's feedback. Uh, and there are a few items in particular, uh, that staff is looking for guidance on. Uh, these are summarized in lines six through ten of the staff report, uh, looking to see how, uh, what council thinks about revising the front and side yard, uh, requirements uh, in order to reflect the existing development. and side yard, uh, requirements, uh, in order to reflect the existing development pattern in this neighborhood, uh, standardizing the allowable building heights, uh, and these lots are generally narrower compared to other areas of the city. Um, and then what council thinks about using an overlay district, uh, rather than creating a new zoning district, uh, just for this neighborhood. Uh, as was mentioned, uh, the recommendation from staff is that city council, uh, review the draft ordinance and then schedule a first, uh, reading to allow for all the relevant boards and conditions, uh, as well as the scheduling of a neighborhood meeting, uh, to talk more with the community members. Uh, so staff had, uh, two recent, uh, work sessions, uh, that went, uh, very positively with the planning commission to discuss, uh, the draft code amendments. Uh, these were held at the end of last year. Uh, and a summary of, uh, the comments from the commission as well as staff responses is provided in lines one twenty-one to one forty of the staff report. A little bit of background on this, uh, neighborhood. Uh, so Greenway Downs, uh, straddles South Washington Street. Uh, there's a portion of the neighborhood within, uh, the city of Falls Church, as well as a portion that is on the other side, uh, in Fairfax County. And so what's unusual about this neighborhood, uh, is that these properties, uh, virtually, uh, they all, uh, they were all built, uh, before the zoning code, uh, was created. Um, and they share similar, uh, zoning nonconformities of smaller lot sizes, narrower lot widths, and smaller building setbacks than what is currently required under the R1B zoning district that they're in. Uh, and so generally, uh, the lots are uniform, uh, measuring, uh, fifty feet wide, uh, by a hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, for an area of six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of per lot. Uh, and so the subdivision, uh, for the Greenway Downs, uh, neighborhood, uh, was reported in nineteen twenty-eight. Uh, then the city, uh, adopted a zoning code amendment in nineteen forty-four, uh, that made this neighborhood , uh, nonconforming. Uh, and as was mentioned, uh, looking at, uh, nonconformities, uh, throughout the city, that was one of the major recommendations, uh, brought forth in the twenty-ten ZOAC report. Uh, so, uh, creating an overlay for the just, uh, for this area of the city is one way to, uh, resolve that issue. Uh, and then this has also, um, not only been an item on the commission's, uh, agenda for years, uh, work plan, uh, for years, but there have been several, uh, planning commission, uh, work sessions in past years to, uh, consider this. And it's a big priority for the commission to continue, uh, moving this forward. Uh, so they were very excited to have this on council's agenda tonight. Uh, and it's, so, uh, the intent of this, uh, zoning ordinance is to allow for the continuation of the existing development pattern within the Greenway Downs neighborhood, uh, to remove the requirement to get a variance if a homeowner would like to put a small addition on their house, um, and to encourage, uh, people to have those in place, uh, additions to their homes rather than, uh, tearing down any building. Uh, going through the key elements of the, uh, proposed, uh, code amendment, these are summarized on line seventy-four to one-ten of the staff report. Uh, right now, the minimum lot size, uh, that is proposed for this, uh, overlay is six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, that's, uh, the, uh, generally observed, uh, lot size within this neighborhood. There are a few lots that are smaller, and so staff is looking into, uh, how that should be handled, those few anomalies, uh, throughout the neighborhood. Uh, the maximum building lot coverage for new construction would be at twenty-five percent. Uh, this is what would be, uh, allowed in the R1B, uh, district already. Uh, but the one difference, uh, with this new proposed code amendment is that, uh, homeowners would be allowed, uh, to have an additional five percent lot coverage. If they were doing, uh, new construction, this would only be allowed for a cover porch or an accessory, uh, structure, like a detached garage. Um, and then if you're doing in addition to your existing structure, uh, which is defined as a structure that was built, uh, prior to the date of the adoption of this ordinance, you would be allowed to go up to thirty percent, uh, coverage. Uh, the overall maximum impervious coverage is, uh, remains at thirty-five percent. This is what is allowed, um, throughout the city. Uh, so there are no intended, uh, issues as far as stormwater is concerned, uh, with this proposed code amendment. Uh, the maximum building height, uh, is, uh, proposed to be thirty feet, uh, within this neighborhood, although the, uh, zoning ordinance, uh, would allow thirty-five feet within an R1B, uh, zoning district, as these lots are currently nonconforming. Um, most of them could actually only go up to twenty-nine, two feet. Uh, so it's not really a reduction. It's actually just rounding it up. Um, so that's, uh, what staff is proposing at this point. Uh, for building projections, uh, front and rear building projections are similar as to what's allowed in other parts of the city. Uh, but for side yards, uh, looking to, uh, have restrictions on those, and this is for fire safety purposes. Uh, for front yard setbacks, it's proposed, uh, to be at twenty feet. This goes along, uh, with the existing construction of, uh, structures throughout the neighborhood. And then for side yard setbacks, uh, staff is proposing to have two types of side yard setbacks. Uh, one would be for if you have an addition to an existing structure, uh, and then the other would be if you're doing a new construction. And then, um, the other thing that is new in this proposed code amendment is that there is a floating side yard setback. Uh, so you are, uh, permitted to, uh, shift, uh, your house to one side if you wanted to have, uh, six, uh, eight feet on one side and ten feet on the others. You have to have a total of eighteen feet, uh, so you can do that. And that would be, uh, to allow for a ten-foot wide driveway on the side of the house. So as was mentioned, uh, staff is looking, um, to, uh, get further feedback from council tonight, um, and then looking, uh, to move forward to a first reading and referral to relevant, uh, boards and conditions.
All right, thank you very much. Want to open up the questions, Mr. Z.
Well, I remember the ZOAC. Some young council member, first term, thought it might be fun to just overhaul the entire zoning ordinance. Yeah, the sitting man yourself for it.
So, so tell me, I do have a question actually. Um, how is this, how is this, uh, uh, how does this differ from, uh, what's the ZOAC recommended that we do for new Greenway Downs? Because as, as I recall, um, looking at the, either a new zoning designation or an overlay, was the side of, you know, it might be easier and better if we just sit in this place here. So are there major differences? Uh, things have been refined through the years?
The only difference in terms of doing a, uh, an overlay versus doing, uh, a separate district is that you would have to rezone, uh, the properties, which is the overlay over this neighborhood. Um, and then there would be the map that would be adopted showing the boundaries of that overlay.
So this.
So during the first, uh, work session, they were concerned about reducing the maximum building height from thirty-five feet. Uh, and, uh, staff had initially proposed reducing it to twenty-eight feet. Um, but once we, uh, explained that homes within Greenway Downs are not able to be built to thirty-five feet because the lots are nonconforming in terms of lot size, uh, they understood that you actually, um, the homeowners are a little bit more, if they wanted to rebuild. Um, and so they were, they were pleased with that explanation. Um, and then the other question that they had, uh, was, uh, they wanted staff to take another look through, uh, to see if there were any unintentional, um, impacts of the, uh, require, uh, the new proposed code language. Um, and then also looking at, uh, if there would be any unintended consequences with, uh, the increases in, uh, block coverage.
And final question is, do you have available, um, the number of variances for that, um, for that part of the city over the last ten years?
Uh, in the staff report, I believe, uh, there were about twelve that have been submitted for that neighborhood.
And they were all approved?
Uh, I do not know how many of those were approved offhand.
Okay.
All right, Vice Mayor Connelly, I'll go on a table.
So I feel like I should read my, um, my disclaimer that.
This is a picture of her house here.
This is my neighborhood. So I have some strong opinions on this one. And starting with the twenty-eleven memo that I know you inherited, so don't take it personally. But I'm reading this memo and it doesn't actually describe the neighborhood that I live in or walk my dog in. So I'm wondering who's asking, is the neighborhood asking for this? Or is this an idea of the planning commission? Because this says, there are a few driveways and fewer garages. There are fewer garages. But every house has a driveway. So it has a one-car driveway, so cars have to park on the street. But there are driveways. And down at the end of this paragraph, it says, in general, the housing stock there has remained largely unimproved since construction. And my impression of that neighborhood is that almost every house has been changed since construction in a different way, within the zoning code that exists. So that's part of it. And in twenty-eleven, when this came out, there were almost no new houses in Greenway Downs, right? It was all little additions here, little additions there. But in those intervening nine years, there are now new houses in, in that neighborhood. So I think we need to take that into consideration because the little, the chart that you have there, um, those new houses that are being built are pushing the envelope to cover as much space as possible in a way that a renovated house wouldn't. So if we look at the lower right there, where it says new construction under proposed code amendment, it's got an eight-foot setback on one side and a ten-foot on the other and a detached garage. Like, if we give people that option, those houses are in the area of red that Mr. Lickenhouse pointed out before, they're gonna be bought up and that's gonna happen everywhere. And that's gonna cover every single ounce of that thirty-five percent block coverage. So that's concerning to me. It doesn't seem like what we're doing is promoting maintaining the existing housing stock with the way this is written now.
So the only change for new construction is that they're getting two feet, uh, relief for the side yard setback. So they would require, be required currently under R1B regulations to have ten feet on both sides. Uh, and they would be allowed to have an additional five percent cornered, uh, detached accessory structure.
But this is for new construction. This is for new construction, correct? Right. And that's my concern. I think that what's gonna happen is they're gonna take every inch of that and then we're gonna have houses budded up against each other that are sixteen feet apart, filling up that entire lot with any extra that they can take. So if you look at the building addition on the left there, that one has six feet on one side and ten on the other. That's, I mean, six feet on one side, that's tiny. Is that...
So the six-feet side yard setback is what the building official, uh, wanted for, as a minimum for, uh, fire safety purposes. Do we want anything?
But do we have, but so six feet doesn't exist right now, right? It's ten feet right now.
Or, yeah, it would be ten on both sides. So if you did an addition, you would have to have ten feet on those sides still.
So what's the six feet?
That would be the new proposed code amendment. You could go down to six feet on one side.
Okay. That just seems like you're, that just seems like we're making it super, super tight in there. That unnecessary density, um, in a neighborhood that's already tight. And with this ten-foot detached garage in the back, the, the way the terrain goes in that neighborhood, there are almost no houses that could actually do that. Um, because there's a hill, it, I mean, Georgia Mason is at the top of the hill and then Greenway and Cameron go down the hill. So a lot of those houses have like a steep hill in their yard. You couldn't actually physically put a structure in the back there anymore.
Just do it.
Right. Right. Believe me, I imagined it so hard in my house and it just is not gonna fit. The only thing that, so I, I just wonder what the necessity of doing this is. Because I hate to say it's limping along just fine, but it is. People know what they can fit into. They know they bought a small house on a small lot. And if we don't have an uprising from the neighborhood that they really, really want changes, then I don't know that we really need to do it. The only change I would suggest and would think would be great is in the front yard where there's a covenant line at twenty feet or, there's some covenant line that's drawn in there. It would be nice if the front yards could have front porches and have a little more space in this. Because we call my porch, the porchito, because it's one and a half feet deep. And we would have loved to have gone out farther, but there, but we couldn't do that.
You say covenant. You talk about restrictive covenant?
No, I don't know. It's some.
That would be private. That would be.
It's some, no, there's a line there.
It's, it's also, there's a subdivision covenant that the setbacks are at twenty feet, right?
That's, that would be private. I mean, at least in my experience, that typically was done by the subdivider of the land as a way to, generally what happened historically before they had a zoning ordinance, subdivisions of the land would actually create terminal mini zoning ordinance and say, you can't build your house closer to the front than this. Because there was no zoning ordinance for the neighborhood. And they didn't want hodgepodge stuff there. But that, I think, would be private, not by the government.
But it still exists though, right?
Yeah, but that would be enforced, maybe by your neighbors, not necessarily by the city. But I don't know enough about the details, but it's just.
Right.
The bullet point explains that, nine to six, right? So the original covenant, nineteen twenty-eight, twenty feet, and then nobody built anything because of the depression. In forty-four, the city put in a twenty-five-foot setback. That's, that's what's governed. That's why you couldn't build one of your porchito.
Right.
And so you would like that relaxed.
Except they already built it before.
That's too late for you, but you would have.
Too late for me, but somebody else.
And I think the R1B, uh, uh, for the last five or six years allows encroachment into the twenty-five-foot, if you build a porch.
You can, but you can only encroach eight feet. So if you already have your house in Greenway Downs that's encroaching five feet into your required, uh, front yard, you can only go another three feet.
How you do that is you build an eight-foot porch and then you build a, a, uh, six-foot planting ledge. I'm not telling you where that is, but.
You do, you do have to, you do have to wonder what state. As we worry about whether we do the right thing here every day, you have to wonder, what were they thinking in nineteen forty-four? Retrozoning an already-built subdivision into noncon, into massive and eternal nonconformity. I mean, what were they thinking? Really? I mean, they're that desperate to, that's just amazing.
I don't know. But anyway, so that, those are just my thoughts. I just don't know that it's necessary to do this. I haven't seen or heard anything that makes me think there's been a rush on this, or people are asking for changes that the planning department can't accommodate. Or when there are requests for changes, are people getting variances? And.
Well, that was a question about the twelve. Uh, you know, how many of those were approved or what got modified? Uh, that might be something that might be, that would be a stimulus.
So generally, the idea when you have nonconformities is that at some point they're going to go away unless you amend your zoning ordinance. So the reason that staff, planning commission, others are looking to move this forward is to be able to preserve that existing development footprint in the neighborhood as it is. Uh, that is the idea behind this.
Which is, like, exactly what happens.
But I do think that it, that by opening up the rules for new construction, that it will encourage more new construction. And maybe some of those houses built in nineteen forty-two are ready to be knocked down and new ones. And, but some of them aren't and some of them could be preserved. But if the emphasis, if, if you can build your brand-new house even bigger on that lot, then I don't know that we need to do it.
Coming from a BZA perspective, and Mr. Z can probably sympathize with this. You establish, uh, an overlay here that gives people floating flexible, flexible setbacks, and it's an overlay district associated with how they build accessory structures in the back. So, I mean, do we open ourselves up to people that wanna take similar liberties with lots throughout the city that would appeal to the BZA and fight it and say, got an overlay district here, we'd like exceptions on what we'd like to do with our own property? And using this effectively as precedent?
I mean, I, I think the answer could be that the city explicitly allowed it here and explicitly does not allow it there, and therefore that it's not a precedent. Um, I mean, I think that would be the response to that question. But, uh. I mean, I think that would be the response to that question, but, uh-
Well, with the same thing, I mean, like, my earlier question about duplexes on R1A, we, we don't allow them. End of discussion. There's some things that we just said we don't do, I guess. I'm angry with you, though. You raised the question, why don't we do them? I mean, it says who? It just says us, but why? Appreciate you, fine. Yes, I, I wish I'd listened to the planning commission. So, is it parking? I mean, the picture you've got of the garage is what catches my eye. I mean, there are a lot, a good many, in housing law, they only have one, you know, front yard parking path. They don't have a driveway, they don't have much anything. Is it parking? Off-street parking, those drivings?
Uh, staff is looking to encourage off-street parking, um, and then particularly if the parking could be to the rear of the houses rather than having a garage that is taking up a good portion of the house frontage, apartment, urban design perspective.
I'm just curious, why is that?
It's more neighborly, if you have the porch in front rather than having half of the front facade as a garage.
And yet, if you're talking about self-managing dwelling units, you know, one of the things that's gonna happen, that you're gonna have people with cars that have parking on the street, I mean, those, talking about a whole package, you know, those two things are at odds with each other.
Question. Do we have any examples in our neighboring jurisdictions? We've had something similar? And what was the outcome?
I know in speaking to the city attorney that reducing the side yards setback on one side is something that her is done. I don't know the specifics of the outcomes of it.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know. Well, I, I guess I, I was just, I'm more interested in the before and after. If there's an example of, we had it one way, we accommodated it another, what happened? I mean, if it's always been that way, then it's always been that way, but it's worth- Okay. I, I'd be curious if there were examples out there, and what, what happened. Are there other, sorry?
Because I had a similar reaction as Mary Beth on this, uh, because I think if I read the staff report correctly, the intent, since this has been on the planning commission's priority list for some time now, as clearly they thought it was important, was to encourage more modest renovations and additions and porches that haven't been able to be done without going to the BZA. So, is there a way to do these things without it actually enabling new construction to be bigger, right? Like, can you actually put in this overlay but limit it to only additions and renovations? Or does it have to apply to everything, and then you might get that unintended consequence where new houses are even bigger than before?
I think the only thing that you do is if you had new construction, have to be in accordance with the existing R1B regulations. You still might have tear downs. I mean, you can't tell people they can't tear down their house. But then, the difference there would be you're gonna have your existing houses that are at the twenty-foot setback. You're gonna have new construction, you're gonna have to push back five feet. Um, you're gonna have differences in side yard setbacks that may not be a concern.
So I think the policy goal was worthy, which was, how do you encourage just small-scale renovations, right? So that people don't have to, you know, if it's easy to go through the BZA, you know, fine, but it sounds like it's hard if we're only getting twelve, so how do we encourage? So I think the policy goal's worthy, but I do think that the natural thing is, gosh, if you relax all these things, people are just gonna build bigger houses. They can see it everywhere else, right? They just maximize what they can build.
The other thing that would be good is if staff actually went out and walked up and down the streets and took a look at some of what is new and has been built since 2011, when this was first considered. Because Cameron Street in itself has changed so much just in the last year. There are some gigantic houses on that street that are just very tight that are built according to the existing R1B guidelines. And then what happens if you've got a house that decides to go for the six-foot setback? The lower right? Then the house next door, could they also have a six-foot setback, or they have to have a ten-foot setback because they came second?
They could also have the six-foot setback, and the building official said that for fire purposes, that's fine. You actually only need five feet.
So there would be, then, between two houses, there could be as small as a twelve-foot setback, twelve foot setback.
All right, is there anything else?
Yeah, just one, one more question. It's, uh, is there, is there any language in here that, uh, that positively identifies that the garages would be in the back? Some prohibition, I guess.
Uh, so, in line two thirty-nine of the ordinance, uh, it says that detached accessory structures shall not be located forward of the house. Um, and then it says the setbacks from there.
Okay, but does it go out specifically prohibited a two-car garage?
If they wanted to have it as part of the main structure, no, it would not be permitted. But if they wanted it detached, it would have to be, uh, behind the house.
Right. Well, one of the, one of the reasons to do this is to have a fuller with porch. You know, with things that you want some stronger lighting that encourages, well, it says you can't have a garage in the front, I think is what it has to say. That can be part of the overlay. Yeah, you have to, that's where you see a million and a half house, you have the porch that's six feet wide, two-car garage. That's what we see now, that's, I understand that. We don't like that.
Any further comments?
Well, so, um, I do wanna get a sense of what, so, so the, 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 uh, recommendation at the beginning was to begin with first reading. I'm getting a sense from council, the council would like some more work on this. So the takeaway, would it be accurate to say the takeaway is there is some interest on addressing the porch issue and the front yard issue generally? There's generally less support for the side yard loosening, is that a summary?
I'm looking at the side yard. Lots of people are-
For myself, I don't say that much, but I would just say, in some ways, this feels like a solution looking for a problem. And, um, I have concerns of the garage brush, in fact, of the major swath of the city changing the rules. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering, kinda like Vice Mayor, whether things are going okay, maybe it's a little suboptimal, but are we gonna create something that's worse by, um, some, you know, unintended consequence, some loophole that isn't readily apparent, but somebody figures it out in two years and makes a, you know, we've got something going off throughout the city. So, I would like to kinda go in a measured, slow way, rather like, uh, the cottages. And speak with some folks, get some more input. Um, so we best, we best understand this, but I would like the most limited approach to this in terms of, how do we do this? It's, it's very, start with a very incremental way, maybe like Letty's mentioned the last one. And go broader as opposed to, hey, this is one hall of swath of our city, we're gonna, what else would change the rules? It just doesn't seem like it's that dysfunctional right now.
Yeah, I think we ought to take a look at the, the BZA applications and how they ended up.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right, thank you, Council.
All right, thanks very much for your work, appreciate it.
The last item on the agenda is a request for granting an easement to Washington Gas for, uh, some valve infrastructure. Sue Long is their project manager for the construction phase of the high school site and overseeing the infrastructure work. And Mike Whitfield is their director of public works. And I'm gonna put some slides up while you all make a couple of introductory comments. Uh, the request on this one also is tonight to allow us to go forward and have a formal question comment on this, specifically the planning commission and Wrecking Parks. And then have it come back to you in March for formal action. That's the request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, before we get started, we do have a, we're down to, the arts are now collecting class. Uh, yes, so Susan Long is our CIP project manager, and, uh, this is one of her projects. And it's, uh, it's smaller, but I'm gonna let her kinda go into the detail. Uh, there's really not a a lot to discuss on it, although it's just a monitoring station that needs to be, uh,
If our history's any, uh-
We'll see if we can do it. Well, it's nice to meet you all, but I haven't met you so far. Um, so, the gist is, Washington Gas has a regulator station on the property of the existing high school right now. You can see what it looks like, it's those two green boxes. They are eight feet long by three feet wide and five feet high. And they need to be moved out of there, um, in time for demolition of the old high school. So, ideally by next spring, um, so we can continue with the private development, um, my neighbor site on that corner. So-
Stop me right there, but they fit in Dave Snyder's front yard, I'm just curious.
I thought, I thought they were backflip inventors.
If you like the look of them. They, with, in, in discussion with Washington Gas and with the private developer, the nearest, um, and sort of best location we could come up with to relocate, to relocate them to, that wasn't private, was in West End Park. So, just to the side of the car wash, the side of the car wash, there's that nice archway, and then kinda to the left, right adjacent to the wall, the back wall of the car wash, we would move those two boxes. The easement needs to be, per Washington Gas's requirements, a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet long by twenty feet wide. And it looks about like a big rectangle. The two boxes have to be thirty feet apart. And we have a very, very basic concept landscape plan, shows how we would do our best to disguise them. And the developer, the team, Post Church Gateway Partners, is paying for the relocation to the substation, and we work to provide some sort of cover and landscape at West End Park as well. And the timeline is tight because we're sort of working backwards. Washington Gas would like to get this new station up and running in October, time for the next heating season. So that means getting the old station decommissioned around that same time, and they would like to start construction in May on the new station to meet that goal. So, that's why we have this-
May of twenty twenty?
Yes, that's right.
It was-
Yeah, a couple of months from now.
May twenty twenty, and then they want it ready by October twenty twenty.
Yes.
Right.
Um, and then, we do have a little bit of leeway there, we have, but their goal is to um, have this all turned over to the new station before the turn of the year, this is, this is- That's it.
So, are the lines in place, and we're just putting valves on existing lines, or is the line in place as well? So there is a line there already?
There is a line there, that's right. So that was another reason that this was a good location. And according to Washington Gas, it doesn't matter where on the line this regulator station sits. It's sort of, it can serve the same function.
Why does it say proposed twenty-foot gasses if the lines are here?
We just know, but it is running down broad streets and the line, it's straight, the line is not gonna be there.
Oh, so, so in addition to placing the boxes, they're the regulator boxes, where actually, is there a line? Almost like a lateral, making a loop or something around there? And where does the rest of the line go to the street that's right above there, turn left?
Now, it goes in and comes straight back down. So the construction actually would be running right up the path, and in fact, right under the arch, you're right about that.
So we're gonna run a gas line underneath the arch, just draw a line where the, where the gas line's gonna go, you know?
The gas line's in broad streets, the gas line will go into the park using the pathway. You can't go over here because there's already some big boxes that the power company, uh, and telco companies have from the, when all the search was underground in the nineties. So the gas line would go up underneath the path, and then get over here into, uh, into the natural area in place there.
I guess it's just run a loop, like it basically goes up, gets regulated, you know, some valve, and they come right back? Okay. And so, um, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, I know you said this was the best location, but where were the other ones that we considered?
Well, there really weren't any. Uh, we tried to, we've-
It's the one and only.
So, we, where we, uh, you know, we were looking for other right-of-way, right along the V-dots right-of-way. Uh, there wasn't enough space for these requirements. We were looking at land uh, right along on Hickok Road, along the federal realty frontage. And that, uh, didn't have enough space either without getting, you know, doing an acquisition with federal realty, which we knew was going to be difficult. So, uh, we have, in truth, not found that.
So now we're building a, uh, right outside the car wash, we're gonna build a, a box farm, I guess, with all kinds of little purchases. And then you throw in some junipers and, I, I, you know, I, I it's gotta go somewhere, it's probably just, I can't speak to that, but it says, you're gonna keep a magnolia, get that, you're gonna relocate some existing junipers if you can. Then you're gonna relocate, I guess, the existing trash can. So where's that go? And then why are we taking out an asphalt, replacing asphalt?
This is very early stages, we're certainly open to suggestions.
Or pay for it.
Yeah, they need to restore it back to the-
Yeah, who's, is this their plan? Did they pay Walter Phillips or somebody?
Yeah, that's right.
So-
No cheapo. Give us back the trash can, too. And the bench.
So, um, did they wanna run the line up the entranceway, which is probably fairly disruptive, right? I mean, we just put that thing in a couple of years ago. Uh, I guess is there a solution around that? I mean, I hate to just tear the thing up, but I don't know.
No, it's, it's, it's not the perfect plan, I would say that.
I broke this part when I first started.
Yeah, that's right.
So I, I know this entrance in detail, and there really is no other good location to put that line in there. Uh, we've got a ditch there that's next to, you know, a plant. And the, the actual pathway is the only way in. On the other side of it, we've got some major structures, we have a DEV box, so it's-
It's a clearance for the box, there's no way of clearance in the box system. In terms of how close to the structure do you do? Well, close to anything, yeah. Usually it's improvements, but I guess you could just shrug trees as well. What's, you know, the clearance is around the box?
The horizontal clearance?
I don't, I don't, just, how far out do you have to go to keep it clean? You know, in terms so they can open the doors, get in there, do maintenance?
So between power and gas, you'd like to have at least five feet.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about just in terms of their own.
Around the box?
I don't want anything around the box, five feet, ten feet. Usually there's a spec that tells you how far away to the box they, when I complain of magnolia, like right up against the front of the box, right?
So, DEV requires that, I'm not sure what Washington Gas requires.
Should know, 'cause it looks like we're showing a bunch of stuff right up against it, which we may not be able to do.
No, Walter Phillips is talking there. There is a lot of negotiation going on with Washington Gas and Walter Phillips right now to get this in place as quickly as possible. They probably do have that detail, I can-
That would be good. And also, to me, they're asking for twenty-foot easement. Often, if you can negotiate, it's like, if you get ten feet, you're not getting twenty feet. It'd be nice if we could kinda turn that down, matching the line. It's not very big, right? If it's a gas line, it can be, but it'd be nice if we could be able to make it easy to ten feet, to give us flexibility in future improvements. Some concrete structure, uh, to increase the area typically. Or what I'm saying, we couldn't do it. That's the best thing. Can you get back to the other slide just for a second?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I was just gonna say, my, my main concern is about future improvement of the site with easement. I think that that's gonna be a critical point, because that's been my experience as well. If you do a twenty-foot easement, you're pretty much back on the fact that- Pretty much back on the fact that we can't do any side, anything inside that easement.
I also talked to Wyatt earlier about having a clause that we relocate easement. These expense, I know at times there's a nickel for other things. This might be one of these cases, but I think having the ability to relocate. If we had something further wanted to do, we can revell up the capacity. You have the car wash site next door becomes available. Maximize flexibility. But in the future.
So if not, this can't be done on the other side of the street?
Who's property?
Yeah. We just don't have any that.
We've got some city um, property back there.
About for
Under the ban.
The park authority, um, we're trying to stay away from the park authorities. So they're on the other side of the street. This land is also under the park authority. But they're also just impacting the reasons that I feel. For all this is awful as well. So the pathway was, it was a cyclism there.
So it's got, it has to be done north of Broad Street?
Um, there was some proximity existing valve regulator, they didn't wanna get too far away from serving purpose. In incident work. So that was
I just had two requests, so if this has to be here, um, Mary Beth mentioned this, but I was serious about it, like, can we cover it with some art? So we're gonna have some giant boxes in the park, let's make them pretty, if we can. Um, and second, it sounds like the construction work is also gonna happen during the summer mess. So if we're gonna be digging up the street to put a lateral in, if we can at least, if we can control the schedule to do it earlier in the summer, so that it's not right in the middle of all the other stuff that's going on, that would be better.
Agreed to ask him that question and they've said that, but we'll, 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 we'll keep him present. There is a lot that is underground here. There is a lot that is underground. Upset of places. We wanna minimize the Um, well, we've known about this for three, four months. And Yeah, I mean, it, it's just uh, it's the expense of that would definitely
All right, anything else on this? All right, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. So this is a
Well, so when will this come back for?
Uh, March.
Ten, ten.
So we'll
The answer is that.
Advance, you know, these are all
So you'll get all those updates first?
Yeah, we'll probably have some more from
All right, thanks much, appreciate it. All right, we're actually doing pretty well time wise, so of course that'll come screeching off. Um, all right, let's move on to schedule and council, questions, comments, et cetera. Okay, vice versa.
I'd like to request that we do a music video for twelve days of summer. And FCC TV makes it, and we can do one different construction project for every day in the summer. And it can be a very funny video, that people at least know that we're all in this together. The twelve traffic jams of summer.
All right, what else we got?
Okay, I'm the screeching hall part. Uh, to the appointments committee, the folks at Citizen Brata City are hopeful that they might bring a new class of youth representatives to you in time for your, whatever you do. Uh, and in order to have them sworn in on May the eleventh, so just putting that date out there. Consider get your part done in time for swearing on. Uh, my colleagues on the economic development committee turns out I have a family obligation on the morning of February twenty seventh. It's Monday, we look at your schedules and see what time works for you, Ross, that we play that day, sometimes we've met as late as noon. One o'clock. If you can't do it that day or that afternoon, next morning. Manager. I would suggest noon, I think, after. Ah, it's not bad, I did.
It's a good idea, but he won't do it.
He did. Oh, well, okay. I don't wanna keep you.
There's always seven days.
I don't know whether you'd like the Popeye's chicken that I drink for lunch. Well, look, let me, look at yours. Before we decide the agenda. Okay, so I'm fine, all right, fair enough. Mr. Manager, I hope that's all right with you. All right. Um, can you, can you give me that date one more time? Uh, February twenty seventh, same day, but noon instead of nine, noon. Um, the uh, census, is, is that one you're saying something about the census before April first? Showing up on our schedule here at least a couple of times?
Uh, we can put it on the schedule.
Just a report from
Yeah.
Our team, which is doing whatever it's doing, you know, the complete count, let's get fifteen thousand Falls Churchers. You know, let's reach out to the second language community, all the things that we're doing.
Uh, we can do a report on that, uh, it's on the COG, CAO's agenda this Wednesday. Uh, you may have noticed also in the city's publicity, we started that up last week.
Yeah, made me wonder, well, are we reaching out specifically to you know, fields and actually you target?
The school's um, Family Resource Center has offered to do a
They have.
Session for parents.
Working together.
Okay.
That was great.
Thanks for the purple bin, seems to be well received. Glass.
All right.
So you're proposing that we not meet on March the second, is that quite a
Well, we've kept it blank just so that we might have that option.
So so also, it's likely on or about that time, we'll have a joint meeting from Alex and you, so the verbal could be that if we don't meet that day, we might have next day's close by, so don't worry that we probably have many meetings to be had. Okay.
I had two things. Um, in response to the Nolan emails, I think we've all gotten, um, I think we need a more formal response besides, hey, we're just gonna give you twenty thousand dollars and we'll do some light solutions. I did see a bunch of the emails, they actually asked for a sidewalk and I ran through that neighborhood myself. Um, and cause we have essentially a sidewalk gap where Midvale is, when Midvale starts, actually when Broad it starts, Broad and Nolan has sidewalk, and it stops and you get to Midvale, and it starts back up when Midvale kinda does the little horseshoe. So that stretch I know is, you know, a good long stretch, but I think when we talk about missing link sidewalks, given that we've heard about the traffic concerns there, the blind hill, the width of the street, I think a sidewalk would make sense. Um, so I'd like us to more seriously consider that one. But I don't think twenty thousand is probably enough for them. Um, and then my second request is actually to do with broader transportation topic. Um, I read through the current proposed CIP that Cindy's presenting to the planning commission for transportation projects. And while we have a bunch of good intersection improvements, I think there's one low cost thing that I'd like to see us do more of. Um, so we've talked about the leading pedestrian intervals, the LPIs, I think we've added eight of them in the city. And so I ran five miles through the city on Saturday and then today, I counted the intersections I ran through. I almost got hit out of twenty-three in three of them. And I can name the specific ones, and they were all instances where people were turning left and turning right when I had a walk signal. And he knew it was me. Uh, and so I think LPIs or full protected walk, um, is really a programming thing. It doesn't require putting new lights in. Um, so I'd like to explore whether we can actually put in either full protected walk or expanding the LPIs we have beyond the eight. Um, and look at maybe the heaviest pedestrian intersection, maybe Broad and Washington, Hickok and Seven is probably another one. Especially when we do all that construction, trying to get people to West Falls Church. So, um, I like to make an official request to staff that we actually look at where we can add LPIs across the city. And then also test out doing full protective walk signals, which would be kind of a pedestrian signal everyone is read, so no turns allowed during that time. Cause if we're serious about, you know, promoting walkability and pedestrian safety, I think that is the gold standard, is pedestrians get priority to cross. It shouldn't require people dodging cars, like I had to literally slam my hand on the trunk of people, on the, the hood of people's cars, because they were about to hit me while I had the right of way. Uh, and I think that's probably more common happening than people realize. So I don't know what that's gonna take, I don't think it's on the CIP magnitude, cause I do think it's just programming. But if staff can look at where we can add more LPIs, um, or even uh, expand it to be a full protective walk, I think that would be a nice, nice walkability improvement everyone would appreciate. Second.
Could be.
Third, too.
I think one of the nice have we sort of looked at other communities and said, all right, let's put all this together, lower the speed limit, more enforcement, this kind of thing. We seem to deal with a bear and it just comes out of them. And it's, is there more of a, sort of a sitting life work we can do with this? Um, and really sort of, the objective here is to maximize biking and walking and safety. I think our goals are fairly clear. Like, what we get is there's a problem here, and there's a problem there, and in a way, it's really a problem across the city. It fits really well here, all you need is a person trying to, you know. So, see what I mean? Is there, is there, is there more of a conflict that's with the number of the home parks?
That's a traffic study that uh, needs to be done in order to lower the speed limit, so. I'll get busy.
I think the unifying principle is, is clear. I mean, with the council's direction on this is clear, and having a unified program that um, so we're not scrambling constantly to address complaints, but really we have a program. The CIP is, is our biggest effort. And that is a program, most of those dollars are driven by intersection improvements and walkability improvements. The neighborhood traffic coming is much smaller and the sidewalk programs will be much smaller as well compared to those big grant funded transportation projects. But then just broader policy and um, messaging and hitting on all cylinders, I think that's probably what your question is getting at and having it all moving in the same direction. That I think we need to do a better job. And so I think the budget will be an opportunity to do that and assess that. And um, keep going from there, I think some of it can be sort of uh, programmatic also, you know, zero foot fatality goals that the region has. And um, there are a lot of things that we can use to get the message out, or why are we tearing up all of these streets and intersections? This is why, this is part of a bigger effort, uh, to make the city safer for, for walkers and cyclists. And uh, joggers and drivers.
All right, what else we got? All right.
Um, I wanna get back to the Wabata thing real quick. Um, because the stations will be effectively closed down, or at least they'll be limited ridership. How does that affect our allocation for what we have to pay them going forward? Do we, does it reduce our costs? Do they say tough cookie, it's gotta be done?
What would probably happen is all these shuttles will be charged against our bus formula next year.
But I'm serious about that. Um, I, I don't know, does, does that make a difference? That was my concern too, that we would have to defeat the cost of the shuttles as well as have ridership down. And then maybe they say you have fewer people, so we're actually gonna charge you more.
I don't have the exact answer to the question. I, I don't think in the model, you know, in the formulas
You could just say no.
Shut down has
A worthless endeavor. Okay. Um, the injury last week, the woman that was hit crossing the street. From a Harris Teeter, a non-threatening injuries. Um, is the, how does the timing of that light work? Have we looked at that?
Um, that is not one of our LPIs, if I recall correctly.
It is?
Really? I've used that intersection
I've heard the same thing that Officer Brooks told me.
Like North, North Virginia has a very noticeable LPI you need, and I have not noticed it in that intersection.
That intersection seems to change, I, I go there a lot and it's like, it almost seems like, you know, sometimes it's this way, sometimes it's that way. It seems like, I don't know how that sort of doesn't exist.
Yeah, I think we need to look into that, because across there several times too, and I don't remember having a I don't know. Um, okay. A couple of things, one, I had um, put in a request to have uh, next week's budget amendment split into the library and everything else. And I know that that was floated around, did we get any consensus on that? What?
Um, there have been some comments on it, the ones that I got by email were generally opposed to doing it that way.
What was the reason?
Um, well, some of those who did express our opposition to it could, could speak up and speak for themselves, but I think there was just a um, we have uh, had options in the budget in the past, and the council has tried, I think in the last two years, not to do it that way. Um, I think that was one comment.
That was my comment, it was my daily battle days of when we get to budget adoption night and there would be four budgets and no one would know which one was actually gonna get adopted. Cause people were moving things in and out at the last minute, and that, it's been nice not to have to have that essence of it. And then the other part of it was when we were doing those different budget amendments, one of the rules of thumb tried to be if you wanted a different budget amendment, there had to be X, what was it, three people, say they would consider that as an option before staff went to all the effort to do the budget amendment. Cause there was a time where there were like four options and staff was running around crunching numbers and it didn't seem fair to have them do foolishness. So that was my basic objection.
I asked the city attorney, um, what is this in the first reading, second reading? I'm just hoping the impact there. You know, I, I think you should feel free to ask your neighbors and whatever, um, that's not an issue. But I was concerned about if it takes out, what's the impact of what's there, what's the impact of what's in there? Cause I mean, nothing about the first reading of all important. And that's really a city term of expression, so that was my initial question.
Yeah, I spoke with Carol and she seemed to, at least when we initially talked, said that it would be possible. We've had a first reading, as long as the numbers reconcile. Maybe my concern is I, I, you know, expressed my views about opposing spending the surplus money in the library. But I am in support of virtually everything else that's in there. There've also been some additional requests, which I'd like to know where those stand, related to the hurdles specifically. And also some of the additional requests related to traffic coming. So I'd like to have a discussion on either of those options. And if it comes out as it all reconciles to the same number, that's fine. Uh, but I personally don't want to have to vote against things that I support simply because I don't support one of those things. I assume everybody here can appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I feel the same way about the traffic coming. I still have pretty serious reservations about whether we can actually, you know, prudently uh, and effectively spend that much new money. The staff says we can do it. Wanna support the staff and all that, but just based on decades of experience here. I have, but it is not such overwhelming and gnawing concern that I would vote against, you know, combined budget that included it. Um, so I don't know, I don't know where you are on the scale of the library compared to my scale of traffic coming, but um, you know, there's something in this for everybody, is sort of the way I look at it. But, you know, I wanna do whatever it is that builds confidence in the final outcome. The way I would express what Mary Beth said is that it's always been a frustration of mine back in the bad old days, that we could pass a really good budget, but mine back in the bad old days that we would pass a really good budget, but the public never got that because the coverage was all about the fight and the split and the four options and what was lost in the story was, you know, we passed a great budget for the city and schools. And I would like to come out of this meeting with a similar, like, hey, we've done a great thing for traffic calming, something we've been talking about for years and we're gonna really, you know, put a lot of effort and energy behind it and a surge sort of a way. And, um, we took the library off the list and we went to other things. So from a communicator standpoint, that would be my desire.
I thought we were actually going to have, um, two different resolutions. And put the library, which has been subject to reference in both, and everything else, which I call the rest of the Christmas tree. As you recall, I voted against the Christmas tree just because I thought that, you know, we had, it wasn't late enough to hour, we could spend another couple hours throwing in more stuff and more utensil, more decorations. So let me just say this, if you don't have that package with two separate resolutions, I will draft one and bring it before council and make this a really, really long session on Monday. So I'm directing the city manager to bring us two resolutions. Thank you.
That's where I'd like to be, as much as I appreciate it, but it's, I guess, questioning it all is down to really what makes it reasonable, at least as far as I'm concerned, that's the library. Uh, and I don't think we have too many options. I don't think it'll be confusing. Um, so I support breaking it out. How we do that, that's fine, but, um, frankly, whether folks are here or not, I'm just very unhappy having to vote against things that I support simply because there's one item that I don't want, which is being frankly, the center of this conversation for us.
My favorite order is March, which one first? Library first, traffic calming?
I don't care.
I think I care. I'm more on library first.
That does seem to be more important in terms of longevity of the history, expectations, opinions. And quite frankly, I, I don't know very much about Nolan. I've been closer to, uh, contacted the CACT and they've said, well, we haven't really talked about it because Nolan, as it turns out, all the data put it really close to bottom priorities. So, you know, maybe we ought to dissolve the CACT and just do it ourselves.
That's our approach.
But, you know, if we don't vote on the library in a meaningful manner without abundantly with everything else that I think that we're doing in the constituents and for service, then you'll hear about it the next day. Like, what are you thinking? And to, and to package it all together to think that we're all going to say, okay, well, I get a piece of this, I get a piece of that. We get a mural, we get a couple, couple more traffic calming scenarios and we have to settle with city hall yet?
So I would note this, the GMP contract is a separate item on the library on Monday if the recollection serves correct.
That is correct. So that is a standalone vote for the authorization of the contract.
Doesn't only vote twice, vote a budget minimum and then a contract?
There'll be two votes relative to the library on the town.
If we split, if we split, there would be three votes, two of which would be about the library.
That's right.
One would be a budget now just on the library and the other would be an act in, you know, language on the contract. Does that influence? I'm not, I'm just genuinely curious. You vote against one and for the other, I mean, you, you just wanna peel off the library period.
I just think it warrants a separate conversation. Because again, I'm not necessarily against, I'm not against renovating our library, I'm just against having to pay for it. And I don't wanna be asked to vote against a funding mechanism that also wraps into the things that I feel are incredibly important, simply because we did want to separate.
So separating it, so there's, the, the one way to do that is through a motion. You make a motion and there's a vote on it and that accomplishes what I hear you saying you wanna do. That would be sort of the traditional and typical way that it'd be handled. Preparing two different ordinances is, that's a, um, when you're dealing with a really complicated budget, we do that because you don't want the numbers to be wrong. That's the reason we prepared those ordinances. This is a simpler issue, it's one issue. Um, and so it, I will just say, it does seem well suited to making a motion that either, um, gets passed or doesn't get passed and, and the vote gets recorded as to how you stand on it. Um, if there was a direction to provide two different ordinances, here is the thing to consider. What we've never had is a situation where an ordinance has been passed on first reading and then two separate ordinances both survive and get adopted on second reading. Technically, that is not feasible. We would, then we would have to start the first reading, second reading process. What could be done is what we've done in the past where there is one version, there only one can survive. So you could have one version that either has the library crossed out and everything else survives, that's one ordinance. And, um, and then the full package, if, if one of those survives, then the, the record from first reading to second reading is a clean process. But if two survive, then that's something that I don't know technically how that actually, how that works. Do you understand the difference?
Well, I understand how you're trying to explain it. Um, but, you know, I've, I've seen, I've seen these things kind of like work itself out before and I'll, I have to say I wasn't there when they were cracking sauce maybe as a schedule. But, you know, you're taking the redacting half the thing and then redacting the other half.
Only, only one survived.
We had a king of the hill, we had a king of the hill kind of rule, didn't we? I mean, the last one that passed survived, I forget.
So if the GMP for the library was first, would that suit the purpose of essentially having a vote on the library such that that would be resolved one way or the other and that would stand alone as the library?
Well, you have to have authority for the GMP and then you also have to have appropriations to fund it. But you can't get, the GMP doesn't, is just the authorization, it doesn't appropriate the balance.
But so, but that would be a standalone just on the library and then once it was approved, it were to be approved, then, um, the second action would be the budget essentially presumably adopted.
I would assume the budget would, yeah, that would be the, the clean way to do it. You authorize the, the funding.
I get it, I'm just trying to find a middle ground here that people would.
I, I don't, I, I just, I don't see why this.
I kinda like what you said, we authorize it, then we find the money for it, right?
I'm just trying to find some middle ground, people in that way.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems very simple and straightforward to me that you've got two, one survives and then you've got a vote on the GMP. I, I really don't see this as a, as a significant event. So if that's, if that is.
Problem is though then, two, one survives, so you're splitting out the library in one half and the.
Everything else.
Everything else in the other half.
And, and that is what you're saying.
And the library.
Like, everything and then everything excluded the library.
Right. So then we call the motion, right? So whoever gets there first says, I went, I mean, that doesn't work.
I think the way, why I was talking about this is the way this is done is that you, you put on the motion, whoever wants to puts on a motion and apply the ordinance. That is the process. The argument you'll make, why you want to apply it, if the vote's no, then the government's in, yes or no, whatever. But now ordinance, I'm concerned that if you separate out the ordinance, if you now put another ordinance out there, that becomes first reading, not second.
Carol of Abler has just been discussed here, the idea to quote this thing, sort of two surviving ordinances.
Um, I have, I, and we both think it's problematic. She has not done a ton of research on it, but we both think that that is problematic from a technical perspective.
From, from a financial perspective, we can have one ordinance come out of as an outcome. We can provide you alternate motion or whatever way you like it, but we'd have to adopt one ordinance at the end because if we adopt two ordinances, I cannot provide you numbers. I have to assume is the other one going or not going? So I cannot give you the total budget number at the end.
Of course you are, I think that's what we, we were suggesting.
So you, you have to, you can have an alternate motion in the report or somebody can, uh, propose an alternate motion, but we can only give you a one final.
Yeah, I, I get that and, 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 you know, I don't wanna throw away process just because we can't. Um, maybe the, maybe the term art we're using here is, is inappropriate. Maybe we're asking for a draft staff memo that lays it out before we discuss it, it's not actually proposed ordinance, we just have the documents done and available to us so that we can then be able to coalesce our thoughts and opinions from those. Is that the right way to think about it?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's right because really all that the option is doing, suppose there's an option, um, for the budget that doesn't have the library in it. All that's doing is helping you clarify your motion. It is, the motion is what counts and, and it, you know, I would submit you could make that motion without preparing an additional ordinance. But if you, if you want it to see, you can be clear what it is you're asking for, it'd be, it'd be the thing that was approved at first reading with the library crossed out and the, and, um, the totals reflecting that. And then that either passes or it doesn't pass. If it doesn't pass, then it would move to the one that was approved at first reading. But, I mean, that would be the simplest way.
Would note, so presumably that.
You know, the key vote back in my old days, you know, is the no vote, because that's where you see where the split was. I don't know, it's just complicated at a time when I agree that we need to, you know, engage the public and get them to understand what we're doing and, you know, it's just, it's just an extra level of explanation, which maybe the motion proponents will bear or maybe not, maybe we all have to sort of, we'll have to explain what it is that we're doing.
I'm gonna stay right now, I know motion just doesn't get, I mean, this is a huge surplus number, this is a big project, it's been highly debated. I'm interested to know where people stand on specific things and if I was the public, I'd wanna know that as well. And, uh, I'm, you know, we're presented with options despite the fact that people are disagreeing. And I frankly don't wanna have my vote reported against an ordinance that really only has one item in it that I have not been favoring and I don't see that as a habit, I really don't. And I understand my son may feel differently, but to me it seems like a very simple request and something that we should be able to help with.
I think the most remarkable way, we watched.
Yeah, I really wanted writing.
Suppose you do it the other way and we move to say everything out except the library, see what happens there and then do a set, another first reading for the other stuff, that then you're able to say, this one was just about the library, let's do a first reading about traffic calming and the other things and do a second reading in two weeks for now and then, because that one is less timely, it has to happen, but if it is delayed by two weeks, it's less urgent.
Ross here, that's not, I mean, let's come to a resolution there on, I mean, you know, if, if there's new information that is out there about City Hall or if there's some, you know, eleventh hour surprise that's gonna change the landscape the way we think, my understanding is that we're not gonna be able to mature those numbers any better in the next week. If that's wrong, then correct me. But if that is correct, there's just not any new information out there. There's gonna be visits paid to some tenement properties, uh, Wednesday and that's good. And, you know, if guys want something horrifying, please let us know, uh, because I'm, I'm looking for new information. But, I mean, my sense is that I'm beginning to read the same things that I have read literally dozens of times from both sides. No one has anything new to say and, you know, although I'm always happy to hear from folks, it's our job to come to some resolution there on and turn the page and start talking about the next year's budget.
And I'm gonna leave it to you, I will. Go with the motion in next week's hearing. Majority of the folks here feel that they don't wanna go through the trouble of separating these two.
Well, I guess what I would say is, I've been hearing just now for the first time that the city attorney thinks it's problematic, which I think if the city attorney finds it problematic, I think it's something that bears to this in my mind, I wanna think about it. Generally speaking, I don't really care that much about how we do things. I wanna get a consensus, I want people to be heard, I want everybody to have their say, feel comfortable, they can say what they wanna say in a way that's fair to everybody. So I generally don't like getting wrapped around semantics. I think we've done that in the past, it's been totally counterproductive, it's been a waste of energy and resources to focus on putting people in boxes or pushing them to one side or the other, I don't like that. And I like just people having a chance to say their piece, everybody put their cards on the table. And so I don't know how that plays out in this particular circumstance, I'm hearing some new things tonight that I hadn't heard before, particularly as relates to just sort of the, what do you call it, legality or whatever, the propriety, uh, whatever the hell that word is, propriety of, um, doing it this way. I'd like to just find a way that everybody can put their cards on the table in a way that seems fair and stake their ground, what they wanna say, what you wanna say, it's clear what you wanna say. I get it, your point is well taken on, on where you guys stand, you know, we all didn't agree last time, but I respect everybody's opinion. I don't wanna stick everybody and try to stick it to you and put you in an awkward position so that, uh, you know, people think you did something you didn't do. Um, so I don't, I don't wanna end up in a result that makes you feel uncomfortable that you got put in a position that really wasn't reflective of what you wanna say or where you stand. So, but I also wanna do that in a way that doesn't have a bunch of machinations and contortions that are either problematic or not customarily done for the sake of doing that. I'd like to find a way that does that in a way that everybody can halfway get behind and maybe that isn't possible.
I won't belabor the point anymore, but I agree with everything you said, which is why I recommend it, because I don't want it to end up on Monday debating about what's getting moved around, what's not included, and I don't want there to be any confusion afterwards, which was the exact reason it's spelled out on paper. You have a fully funded budget that was at first reading and then you have one that's got everything under the library. Uh, so I thought that was, in my mind, because it's written on paper, uh, and we have two separate votes on it, that that is the clearest, most concise way, uh, for everybody to be heard, for things to be reported, as opposed to motions and figuring it out and things moving and they're not moving. It seems to me that one survives, you've got two specifically spelled out on paper, it's two votes and everybody moves forward and only one leaves. And I think that that's a fairly simple, simple mechanical thing to pull off. But again, uh, I'm not gonna belabor this point anymore. I've, I've said my piece, I think it's something that we should do and I would feel more comfortable if we did it. Um, but, uh, you know, I'll leave it to the, to the majority here if you guys feel that it's just absolutely ridiculous to do that and don't wanna do it, then that's fine.
So would staff bring us any other alternative on the library? I mean, is it, is there a plan B or C or not to relitigate the issue tonight? But, I mean, it's, I, I can't, I'm trying to remember a precedent for, I, I can't think of anything that we've said, okay, we're just not gonna do that. So we usually have a, what are we gonna do? Again, I'd like a positive.
Just to be clear, the, the two ones that both of them survive, that's not precedent. One that fails and then one that succeeds, that is precedent. I just wanna be clear about that. And so the original quest was having two that presumably both would survive and that's the one that.
No, the, the request was two, knowing that only one's going to survive.
No, you're, I'm sorry. I thought your original quest was to have two, one is library only. No, you're, I'm sorry, I thought your original quest was to have two, one is library only, and one is everything but library, and both would survive presumably if last week's vote.
No, I mean, I'm not negative.
That is what I thought your original.
No, you're going to have two, and one is going to work out, and one is not.
Okay, then that is, under that.
I think your problem though is the new option that he's talking about, if the one fails, the one that's already had first reading.
Right.
I, I think that means that the stuff in that option is first reading, it's a new ordinance, it's a new ordinance, it's a new ordinance.
So I, I'm afraid, I'm sorry if I've confused things. So what I stated earlier was definitely what I thought you meant and what Carol thought you meant, because that is what we discussed, and that is what we said was not technically feasible. The option where the first one with the library struck is voted on, and presumably that fails, and then you move to the first one that was approved at first reading, that is in keeping with how we've done the options in the past. And so that is technically feasible, I do want to just make sure we're clear about that. Well, because, you know.
You need to know when that option was proposed, if it was always on second reading or as a first.
Oh, it was always on second reading, yeah.
City already resolved, you know, and I'll go with whatever she says, like, like there is a rule somewhere, that if the ordinance were, let's say the ordinance without the library is passing, that may not, I mean, that's a separate ordinance, it may be, go back, it may be a first reading, just City.
So on, yeah, so it's a, it's a good question, and, and maybe we'd need, need clarity on that. Generally, the rule has been though, if the dollar amount is smaller than what it was at first reading, that is within the bounds of going from first reading to second reading, having the dollar amount grow is where you get into, uh, potential difficulty with the, between first reading and second reading.
Could I make a request, which I know may not thrill people, but I, I would like at some point, when we vote on the library, to actually be able to show the video that has been out there for a while, but I'm still not sure that everybody's seen.
To fly for?
I know that we, oh, we got to wrap ourselves around the axle, all the process and all that, but I just, you know, it's not that one, we just show it, rather than, you know, rush the guy, rush the, I mean, a lot of this is going to lie in the hands of the architect based on my experience at City Hall, there are things that, had we known the architect was or was not doing, we'd have held his feet to the fire a little better, maybe our own feet. So I would like us to have a little bit of a relationship, council, with the architect, and, you know, letting the architect show his video, I think, just a small thing.
There are agreement on that.
How long is it?
I've seen it.
How long is it, nine minutes?
Wait a minute, Ms. Hardy, this is the one who believes there needs to be more public, you know, awareness and input, I mean, that's a very modest request.
I'll give you the video. We get the two votes.
You're, you're going to get your second vote because you're dug in so hard on it, and so I'm trying to get a little bit out of it for me too.
And speaking of making meetings slower, let's, um.
So where, where are we on this? Hearing that it can't happen?
So the, uh, so long as there's one ordinance that survives at the end, that is.
Definitely, I want to vote on options in writing that give the choice, library, no library.
My only source, Mr. Z, has been an option that he loves, so this, but I'll just leave that to him.
Manage, um, our position, knowing that this, that we have to pay for it, and when we pay for it. And I think the library has the biggest dose of immediacy, traffic calming, the barrels. Rest of the stuff, can wait, and probably should wait, because, you know, you don't even have bandwidth to spend all that money, how are you?
So just on the murals, we are meeting with the, um, Ed Henderson tomorrow. Um, the intent, however, is not to bring a dollar request to council on Monday night, but rather to, um, fill out the idea and have options on how we can proceed to. So, um, I'm not.
I'm not against sleep, I'm not against the mural, I hate to interrupt you on this, but, but, you know, obviously, as soon as you start talking, you start talking, and then you come to a point here where, you know, you're going to give up your nuclear weapons, or you're going to keep on building them, and, and none of that would have happened if you hadn't started talking to them, so. So it's great, keep talking, I, but, you know, the thing is, the murals, all this other stuff, traffic calming, that's probably a few more bubbles I left, hang, not off this Christmas tree, you know, all that stuff, probably ought to wait until you get the resources assembled to, to mount this effort up. Otherwise, we're just pushing money, money that we could be regretting, having appropriate authorization to do this with the, with the City Hall, you know, it's just. And you push so hard into formulating a policy that says we have to do certain things that, uh, you know, Wall Street likes, we like, you like, or whatever the reason is, we've done those. And now you're crossing that red line. That's your recommendation, City Manager, that we cross that red line and spend money that we have no certainty of having available, and that's bad. Well, your certainty is based on something else than that, so.
Well, it's based on, you know, a lot of work, hard work, planning, some hope, I mean, I'm sticking with the quote from the paper last week, I think we're in the best ever position to take on all these things. Do I have trepidations about each of them? Absolutely. You know, a lot of trepidation about traffic calm and also about the library, I mean, I, you know, I feel the City Hall weighs upon me every time we talk about this, I mean, I was on the, I was on the committee, I was supposed to be the watchdog, you know, and for whatever reason, it just didn't work out very well. I mean, I think the building's terrific, and, you know, once we finish the punch list, it'll serve the city well for, you know, longer than I thought it would, I mean, it's, it's exceeded my expectations, but, I mean, I'm, if you're not somewhat concerned, then you're kind of dim, I think. But concern and lining ourselves up into, you know, where we are now is, I don't know, I can, I can draw a line between those two, I feel like now's the time to do it, and this is the group of people to do it, because each of you is bringing unique skills to the task of monitoring how the money's spent. You're going to be all over the library, I'm going to be all over traffic calm, Dan's going to be, you know, everybody's going to do their part. I just don't want to lose the moment of the expertise that we've built up here by, you know, well, put that off, we'll delay that. You know, delay is not our friend in terms of cost, Mr. Snyder said, and I'm not sure it's our, our friend in terms of monitoring and oversight.
I would be happy to, uh, even eager to support a traffic calming program that's part of a reverse C I P. Have identified the resources and timetable and schedule to do these things, and the appropriate cost, and not just the three or four, but, uh, you know, a robust program of doing these things, I'd be pleased to vote for that at some future point in time. As well as a host of other things I think that, uh, is desired here, that establishes us as people that are stewards of the character of the city as well as of the money, it's not all about the money. But I've been here, sitting in this seat where we've spent money we didn't have. And I was once, yeah, let's go do it, yeah, let's throw in some more, let's, let's, while we're at this, let's get all this done. Let's study it, let's spend some money on studies, and, and you know what? You know, what can you do then? I'm trying to help us not be in that position again, and then having to explain, well, you know, six months ago, we didn't know what we know now. I'm going to curtail that as fact, it is my opinion, and I was there.
All right, what else I've got?
Get out of here, let's adjourn.
All right. We're adjourned, how about that?